Linda, you could go to call to order, roll call.
Okay. Green?
Here.
Jansen?
Yeah.
Kelly? Newton?
Here.
Swift?
Here.
Chair Fregoso?
Here.
And we do have one vacancy on the commission right now, so that's why I only called six names.
Okay, thank you. We do have a quorum though, so we can move forward with the approval of the agenda. Are there any changes or proposed changes to our agenda? Not hearing or seeing any, we need a motion, don't we, to approve the agenda?
Yes, you do.
I'll move to approve the agenda.
I'll second.
Do you need a roll call or all in favor?
Yes, for Zoom meetings, we're supposed to do roll calls for all motions. So, Green?
Aye.
Jansen?
Aye.
Kelly?
Aye.
Newton?
Aye.
Swift?
Aye.
Chair Fregoso?
Aye. Also, Commissioner Vice Chair Swift will read the meeting protocols for us this evening.
The chair shall maintain order at the meetings in accordance with Robert's Rules of Order, and the commission has responsibility to be a model of respectful behavior in order to encourage community participation and citizen input at commission meetings. The commission and the audience are expected to refrain from using profane language and/or ridiculing the character or motives of commission members, staff, or members of the public, and to maintain the standards of tolerance and civility. Chair, do you want me to go on?
You want to continue with the public comments?
Sure.
Please.
So, public comments on non-agenda items. Anyone wishing to address the commission on matters not on the agenda but within the jurisdiction of the committee of the commission must do so by email or in person via Zoom in the manner described above. Presentations will be limited to three minutes or as otherwise established by the commission chair. Conduct: All interested persons are invited to participate in public meetings. In order to give all interested persons an opportunity to be heard and to ensure the presentation of all points of view, members of the audience should limit presentations to three minutes, provide their comments by email as described above, state view and concerns succinctly, and submit any new documents to the planning staff first via email to be entered into the record.
Great, thank you very much, Vice Chair Swift. And with that, we can go to public comments. If you have public comments, you can raise your hand if you're on Zoom, or you can call in by phone and dial the number nine. And Tamela, our tech assistant, will get you to join us. Tamela, no public comments out there?
Chair Fregoso, I do not see any hands at this time.
Okay, thank you very much. We will move forward then with the agenda. And consent calendar is the next item, but we don't have any item on the consent calendar, so we can go straight to the public hearing items. The first of which is 79 Wood Lane. Linda, can we have that staff report?
Yep. Okay, so the commission first reviewed this project on August 19th, 2021, and at that hearing, you gave the applicant direction to consider design changes to minimize the proposed impacts on neighboring properties. So, the project now encompasses construction of a 2,210 square foot structure with a 469 square foot partially below grade basement. The proposed residence will have three bedrooms and three and a half bathrooms. The basement and the two floors will be accessed via an elevator, which will run through all three floors. The residents will also have an interior stairway that will only connect the first living level and the second living level. So, the interior stairway will not lead down to the basement. The basement is only accessed via the elevator and an exterior stairway from the east side of the house. The project includes construction of a 400 square foot two-car detached garage with an attached 500 square foot studio accessory dwelling unit. And I wanted to remind the commission that accessory dwelling units are not under, the accessory dwelling unit is not under your purview tonight. It will be processed ministerially after this project is approved, once they submit the building permit. So, at your August meeting, you directed the applicant to consider the following changes: reducing the height of the structure as much as possible, excavating the terrace soil to the rear of the proposed buildings to match the existing grade at the front of the site, and then lowering the garage in the house to the grade, natural grade. You asked them to consider lowering the ceiling heights of all the levels of the house and to lower the attic space ceiling height. You asked them to consider redesigning the ADU at the ground level or maybe as a detached one-story ADU at the rear of the site. You asked them to change the design so that the sides of the structure were more articulated. You suggested parking, relocating the parking from the front of the site. The uncovered parking used to be in the front of the site. You asked them to consider relocating it to the rear of the site to create a more vegetated and pleasing front streetscape. You suggested that the garage could be made a part of the existing house. You directed them to provide revised house elevations, revised shade studies for the new design, revised grading and revised drainage plan for the new design, revised excavation and fill table. You directed them to consider clear story windows or other privacy preservation measures for all windows facing the neighboring properties. And you directed them to try to work with their neighbors to come up with a new design that would be acceptable to everybody. Okay, so the second story of the main residence no longer contains the ADU. So, they did make changes based on your directions with regards to that. The new house design incorporates the following changes as well. The hip roof of the previous design has been replaced with a flat roof that brought the height down. The first approximately 16 feet of the house has been lowered to one story in height with only the rear 37 feet increasing to roughly 23 feet above grade. The attic's been removed from the design. They did not lower the ceiling heights of the two living levels. They've kept the lower level at nine feet and the upper level at eight feet. To increase the articulation of the exterior of the structure in addition to dropping the front of the house to one story, the exterior materials have been revised to provide more contrast between the lower and the upper floor with a stucco siding proposed on the first floor and horizontal siding proposed on the upper floor exterior. The windows on the southwest side of the newly relocated ADU are clear story windows, and that's where their ADU is going to be very close to the existing ADU to the west.
Sorry, could you repeat that, your last comment?
They made the windows on the west side of the ADU that they relocated behind the garage, clear story windows. And that's where that ADU is going to be closest to the existing ADU to the west of the site. They're pretty much right next to each other. The proposed ADU will meet the minimum five-foot setback. The existing ADU on the neighboring property, you know, was built before that five-foot setback existed, so it's very, very close to the property line. Okay. Okay, so the project requires a number of discretionary permits, and I'm going to go over them one at a time. The first is the Hill Area Residential Development Permit. This gets kind of detailed, so I'm just gonna, it's a lot of pages. I'm just gonna suffice it to say that the town engineer has reviewed the revised project plans, including the original geotechnical reports and the revised hydrology reports and calculations for the new proposal. And he's determined that the site can be developed as redesigned without creating geologic, hydrologic, or seismic hazards for residents of the site, the neighboring properties, and the public street improvements. We have included a condition in our resolution, we are recommending approval, that the building permit plans be reviewed by the town engineer prior to issuance of the building permit to make sure that the final drainage designs and geotechnical improvements, retaining walls, comply with those original reports. We do want to point out that the drainage system of this development could be redesigned to not require filling the site. They're proposing to fill the site to slope it towards the street. It makes, in the town engineer's opinion, it makes the drainage more efficient than if you just use a flat site. But it could be redesigned, and that would lower the structure down approximately one more foot. You'd still need a foot for a mat foundation if they decided to do it at grade. The ceiling height of the lower floor could be reduced to eight feet, bringing down the house another foot. So, in our opinion, the house could maybe be lowered two more feet. But the two-foot decrease in height, I don't think would have a significant change in the impacts on the neighbors with solar. That's one of the neighbors' concerns. Okay, so a survey, the height of the existing house indicates that it's now similar to the size of the other two-story homes in the Wood Lane neighborhood. Previously, it was a lot taller. The .12 floor area ratio that's going to be maintained by the 79 Wood Lane project now is in keeping with the floor area ratios. It's kind of in the middle of the floor area ratios maintained by the other homes in the Wood Lane neighborhood. We believe that the revised color palette, it's some greens and tan, a tan, and a black and a gray, are more, they complement the colors that you find throughout the surrounding hillside better than the previous color palette. A review of the revised shade studies that were provided for the new design show that the revised design will not cast shadows on the ADU to the east, solar panels during either the winter or the summer. The application proposes minimal exterior lighting, and the lighting is all going to be dark sky compliant. The project also requires an excavation permit and a retaining wall height variance. The retaining wall height variance is needed at the rear of the ADU where the wall will reach nine feet in height, and that's just the minimum necessary to build the structure and also maintain some kind of level rear outdoor yard area. While the height of the current design has been significantly decreased, we're still unable to make the following required finding to recommend approval of the project as proposed. You know, they increased the size of the basement. And the finding that the commission has to make is that the amount of excavation or fill proposed is not more than is required to show the, to allow the property owner a substantial use of his or her property. They're already going to have a 2,100 square foot, three-bedroom, three-and-a-half-bath house. They are going to have a garage, they're going to have an ADU, and I'm just not, I can't make that jump to that extra excavation for a basement. If they eliminated the basement, the grading and excavation table would be revised as follows. It would require the export of 60 cubic yards of material to the site to do the grading and filling to get the slope for the drainage system to work properly. But the off-haul would be decreased from five cubic yards to zero cubic yards. Therefore, we've included a condition in the resolution that directs elimination of the basement from the approved project.
Linda, can I bother you to repeat what you just said?
Yes. So, if they eliminated the basement from the plans, it would alter the excavation and fill table as follows. The project would then require them to, in other words, they were going to dig the basement out and use some of that soil to get the slope for the drainage. Right? If they don't do that anymore, they have to bring in 60 cubic yards of material to do that filling to get the slope so that the drainage system will work properly.
Whereas excavating for the basement would give them the 60 cubic yards of fill that they need to?
Right.
The slope of the site for drainage.
But excavation isn't being minimized, so.
Though it is a trade-off, because you either excavate onsite 60, 65 cubic yards to incline the slope, or you bring it in from elsewhere to create the slope. So, it's traps coming and going in the same amount in a way.
But there's also another alternative, because the town engineer has agreed that this could be redesigned with a mat foundation at the existing natural grade, which would lower the house another foot. Then you wouldn't have, you wouldn't have any kind of excavation and fill because you wouldn't be sloping the site. You wouldn't have to change the natural topography of the site. And there is another house on Wood Lane that has a mat foundation further to the east. And I spoke with the owner to find out how his, it's a relatively new house with a new drainage system, you know, detention basins to release the water slowly into the soil. And he said that during that October storm, where it rained really, really hard and really fast, he was able to walk through his yard in, you know, regular tennis shoes and not get his feet wet. And his drainage system, which he monitors, worked very well. The only time he got concerned is when the water came down so fast that the water filled up Wood Lane and started to lap at the sidewalks. So, it was threatening to come over the sidewalk and into his yard, but that didn't end up happening. So, the drain, in other words, his drainage system worked. The drainage coming off of the hillside and off of the house did not, you know, create flooding or ponding on his property. So, there's another way to do it. You don't have to, you know, you don't have to excavate, you don't have to have a two-foot crawl space. There's other ways to build. But the town engineer does think that raising it up is the more efficient way. You know, there's less maintenance issues. If you decided to, well, we've included a condition that the drainage system, a maintenance agreement be recorded at the county so that any subsequent owner has that detail about when they're supposed to maintain the drainage system, how they're supposed to maintain it, so that there's no, you know, information about maintenance that gets lost when the property changes hands. It's right there with the title, you know, when they do a title search.
The engineer did actually specify, did he not, that raising the slope, adjusting the slope of the side would provide the best long-term drainage?
In his opinion, yes.
And probably would be more cost-effective for the owner than the other system that could be put into place?
I can't really speak to cost. I don't know anything about that. There's always, there's always different ways to build, right? And there's always trade-offs, so. Okay, so where was I? Okay, so the project also is going to require a minimum and combined side yard setback. The town code requires that structures on sites with over a 15% slope in the RS6 zone maintain a minimum setback of five feet and a combined setback of 20 feet. The site's only 50 feet wide, and it rises steeply at the rear of the roughly 92, at the rear of the roughly 92-foot level front area south of the front property line. So, redesigning to place a detached garage at the front of the site would alter the street view of the residents, but you might be able to meet the combined side yard setback. The garage could also have been incorporated into the house design. This goes to me indicating that you can always come up with other designs. Let's see.
However, which side of the garage does not meet the 10-foot setback?
The west side.
Proposed garage north?
Am I right about my?
East and west, is that towards the stairs to the ADU?
Yes.
East side, west side?
Yeah, towards 85 Wood Lane is to the west. And 70, 75 Wood Lane is to the east.
I don't, I didn't readily see it dimensioned on the plans.
Are you asking for the dimension between the ADU and the?
What is the dimension if it doesn't meet the 10 feet? But that's the side. Isn't that considered the side yard on the west?
Yeah, so let me just, if I, I kind of gave a little explanation. So, what they've done here is they've put the house, the minimum five-foot setback from the house at 75 Wood Lane, which the main house is like 27 feet away from the property line. It has a large setback, right? And they've put the garage closer to the house to the west, where the ADU and the house are almost right on the property line. So, they've kind of tried to distribute the impact of the development on the neighboring residences, right? Rather than putting everything on one side or on the other where one neighbor would, you know, bear the brunt of the five-foot minimum setback.
Right.
Right.
And they cannot, why can't they not move it a few feet in the opposite direction?
Well, they could. It would narrow the driveway really a lot, so.
Because it's already just the basic width required. Because they have to tuck it back in behind the house to get into it.
Yeah, I think if they tried to center the house, they would eliminate the ability to really have a planting strip between the neighbor that has a house almost right on the property line and an ADU almost right on the property line, right? And, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, so we believe that the findings can be made to support the request. Oh, the other variance that they're requesting is the code doesn't allow required parking to be placed in the side yard setback. But just because of the narrow width, they have placed their third required guest space in the minimum side yard setback. That, it has to be located there so that you can get one of the spaces in the garage and out of the driveway at all times, right? It can only be in tandem with one of the spaces for the main house. Okay. So, anyway, we believe the findings can be made to support the requested combined setback variance and the minimum setback variance. And we are recommending that you approve application 20-17 for the house and garage depicted in the revised plans by Frederick Devine Associates dated 10/7/21 by adopting the attached resolution 2022-01, setting forth the findings and the conditions for the project approval, including the following. The basement shall be removed from the plans prior to submitting them for a building permit approval. The windows on the upper floor, east and west sides of the house shall be modified with, I prefer to say, with clear story windows or with non-operable and obscured glass windows. And then the existing, oh, if the existing eastern and western side property line fences are damaged or need to be removed during construction, the owner shall replace the fences at his own cost prior to the project final inspection. And the design of the replaced fences shall be decided upon by the adjacent owners and the property owner. And if they can't agree on a design, the fence design will come back to the planning commission for review and approval.
Okay. Linda, can you clarify for me? Your staff resolution proposes the project be approved as revised with the exception of the basement.
Right.
That the basement would not be created.
Right.
It would just be a crawl space, like the crawl space on either side. However, then what happens to the sloping of the land per the engineer's assessment that it provides the better drainage?
That's what they'll have to bring in, they'll have to import 60 cubic yards of material to do that, to get the grade that's been designed into the project for the drainage system.
So, the trade-off is they either dig down and use that dirt for the sloping drainage, or they bring in a comparable amount?
Right, and I don't, I'm not, I'm not a building official, but the building official has had experience in Fairfax where the water table is, can rise and fall in these subterranean basement areas, even if they're built with the, you know, moisture seals and everything. Over time, they can develop mold and mildew problems. So, you know, it's not just a, I'm not just considering the excavation amount. There's also long-term problems that can be created by these subterranean when we have this water table that goes up and down.
Okay, I'm glad you mentioned that, because if it's just a matter of taking out or bringing in fill, it's not as strong an argument as what you just indicated.
And it's just, you know, I mean, if it was a one, if it was a one-bedroom house, I might say, hey, they don't, you know, this is really necessary. But it's, you know, for Fairfax, a three-bedroom, three-and-a-half-bath house is getting up there. So, it's, you know, they have a lot, they have a lot of living space in there, and.
That's true.
You guys have the final say.
One other question for you.
Some hands up from your commissioners, just letting you know.
Okay, just one final question, and then we'll go to the commissioners' questions. There's an elevator that goes from the basement to the upper levels.
Right.
Is the shaft of the elevator in any way required to get down to the basement? If the basement is eliminated, does that impact the elevator?
You're going to have to ask the applicant that, but I know you can get elevators in any, that go any number of stories. So, I don't believe that that has to be defined into the project, yeah.
Okay, and with that, I'll let other commissioners ask questions of staff before we go to the applicant's comments. Tamela, I guess you're seeing the hands up.
Commissioner Kelly had his hand up first.
Okay. Commissioner Kelly?
Hi there, thank you. I have a couple of questions, Linda. The first one is the existing house, what is the setback of that house on the side yard currently?
Let me look, so I went out in the field, and I couldn't actually get around that side of the house. So, let me take a look at their plans. It may be on the property line.
It is partial site.
Yeah, the survey, the engineer shows it right on the property line.
Okay. And then the second one is about the basement, Linda. Do we know where they plan to put the mechanical plumbing equipment for the house? Is it in the basement? Is the furnace and water heater and things like that down there? Or where are they located in the house?
Yeah, so I don't have construction drawings, so that would be a question to ask the applicant, where they plan to do that.
Okay.
I'm assuming that.
If the basement went away, they'd have to find another place for that stuff.
Right, just like other houses that, you know, don't have basements, but yes.
Understood. Okay, thank you.
And Commissioner Green had his hand up?
Thank you. In the staff report under, let's see, page two, under discussion number seven, I was looking back at the minutes from that meeting in August, and I couldn't find where the garage could become part of the front of the house and why that is there. So, if you could remind me or clarify that?
So, it was based on both mine and the planning director's notes from the meeting, but I don't know where in the meeting it is. I would have to go back and watch it again. We both had that in our, you know, that was one of those, it was a suggestion.
Right, but what was the benefit of that, though? That's what I, that's what I.
Oh, well, if you made it part of the house, then you could maybe increase the combined setback to 20 feet, you know, but you'd have to decrease the square footage of the house. You could have 10 feet on either side. Well, not necessarily. You might have to give up some of the square footage of the house, right?
Can I ask you whether you know whether, you know, you saw the letter from the Fords and their shadow and all that? And so, would that make any difference to that aspect?
Center of the garage, no.
Okay, okay, thanks.
Yeah, I mean, it would just enable you to center the house on the site. And as I said, that would move it an additional five feet away from them, you know. Five feet, their main thing is solar and privacy. And I just don't know, now that, now that the house has been lowered a lot in height, I'm not sure that would really change things significantly for them. You know, getting rid of the attic space did a lot. But they're still looking at a sill, you know, the eve height is pretty much the same as what was proposed before.
Right, because the ceiling heights.
Except that they dropped the front, so you no longer have the two-story full house, right?
Okay, thank you, thank you.
And Commissioner Jansen had some questions?
Yeah, I want to go back to that combined setback, because it's making that clear in my mind. The house has it on one side, 10-foot and five on the other, the garage on the opposite. So, it's not that the garage doesn't comply, they're just fritching it. They're splitting the baby, as we discussed last time, right? It's not, neither one of them. Fritching it, they're splitting the baby as we discussed last time, right? It's not, neither one of them violates, it's just they do it in a. Half halfway, which is unusual and, but we know why it's done, it's so that they're spread the influence, so that's correct, right?
Right, that's correct.
Okay, thank you.
Other commissioner, uh, questions of staff?
Commissioner Newton has just raised her hand.
Thank you, um, so Linda, if I have this right, we're doing the. Opining on a Hill area residential development permit. The excavation slash height variance, is that one?
Retaining wall height variance.
Retaining wall height variance, uh, the setback issues. And a tree permit too, right?
Yeah, do you want me to run over that? Cause I didn't, I left it out, cause this report was so many pages long. Yeah, okay, the tree committee did, the tree committee did review the tree removal permit request, and it was to remove one. One apple, one olive and one oak tree, and they recommended that the commission approve the removal of the apple and the olive. But they recommended that you not approve the removal of the oak tree that's at the north west corner of the site.
And I noticed that the um, resolution would not include the removal, the way it's been drafted of that oak. Um, and it doesn't appear to impact the. The rest of the plans from what I can, okay, thank you, over.
I do not see any other hands at this time, Sheriff Fugoso.
Okay, thank you, uh, we will have another opportunity. Uh, to take commissioner comments and questions of the applicant, we can now move to. Uh, the applicant's presentation, if, if uh, he or she or their architect has uh, comments.
And I believe Laura has joined our panel.
Good evening. Hi, everyone, I just unmuted myself and um. I have answers for some of your um, questions that you raised, I also have like um. I put together some short slides just to um. Go over what the changes were from the last. Meeting. Okay. So, is that, is that? Is that working?
I, I can see.
Okay, great. Okay, so um, anyway, this is um. The owner had, had, had um, artist rendering done to kind of illustrate the differences between the two designs, so you could see that. We've um, it's now a flat roof, previous it was the hip roof. Another point, um, I'd like to point out that I don't know what's included in the staff report is we also. Lowered the finished floor fifteen inches, um, so in addition to the, to the, to the roof height. Um, we, previously it was eighteen point five feet, and now we're at one seventeen point two five. So we made the finished floor the minimum, it could be to create the um, eighteen inch crawl space. Above natural grade so that the site wouldn't be subject to flooding during the heavy rains, and this is probably the most common type of. Floor framing, normally the floor is raised a little bit above, above the grade, there's also a minimum um. The driveway sloped about three percent to account for like the twenty two inches difference between. The street and to where the garage is. So, and here's where um, the artist's rendering did between the, the post house between the two adjacent residences. Okay, and then um, here I put the, and I also included in your packets, I tried to. Create exhibits so that would better illustrate what the differences between the two designs so that you could better understand um. What was proposed.
What page are we looking at right now?
Okay, so this, in your packets, this would be um.
Page one?
Page one, yes, so on the left was the previous design, and because there was parking. Here, we created parking, the building was pushed back, but now the parking is back here. So we pushed it forward, so this is at the six foot setback, and we've got the twenty feet between so that we can have. Um, cars and be able to get out of the garage. There. And um, previously, the, the ADU was up. On the second floor, so there was a stairway that went. Apparent, it looks like the wrong slide got on here, but anyway, that, this, previously, this was the um, the. The um. The stairway for the upper, up to the ADU, so we filled in that corner now, but it was, it's. It's the same footprint as before. Okay, and then you can see here, the front of the building now has the hip roof, before this was all one um. With the ADU in the back, now regarding the basement. The basement is um. One um, commi- commissioner pointed out, where would the mechanical equipment be for the elevator, so that yes. That would be in the basement. We also were proposing to put the, the mechanical system, the furnace, water heater and all that, probably, it needs to go in the basement. The owner would also want, it would like, is planning to put in a solar system where he needs the batteries for that. So that's why um, he's proposing the basement, so um, it is an important part of the, of the. Project for the owner. Okay, and before, the garage got wider to accommodate two cars. And then that would also, and then um, the ADU is, it's like a split, it's a split level. So that it fits into the, into the hillside, because we're at the minimum setback, you know, at the front for the house. And then we had to provide, you know, twenty feet between the two structures to make the, the parking work in front of the garage. And so then that, so then the ADU is then now partially in the hillside. Okay, um, this is another uh. Front elevation that shows the difference between and how we've lowered um. And so I think we're now about um, it's been lowered around five feet. Or more. So um, there's no fill that's proposed on the east side, everything's at natural grade. There's a little gap that's be, there's a natural retaining wall, it's already at the site, so there's a portion that needs to be filled in in order to. To fill in this gap, and there's a little, oh, about five inches or so that needs to be scraped off the site to make the um. Um, to make the elevation work now with the proposed finished floor of this one seventeen point two five. Um, and I know that staff mentioned this transom windows. Um, I just wanted to point out that when you have an eight foot ceiling, and in order to make the framing and the headers and all that work. The minimum um, the minimum height of the windows. That you can get from the manufacturer are eighteen inches in height, so. The um, so that would allow for a five foot four inch sill, it's not possible to get a six foot. Sill when you have an eight foot ceiling, so the owner would prefer to do, use the obscure glass option. Um, unless there can be some kind of um, leeway in the, in the sill height. In order to be able to use standard sized windows. And this is the other side of the house, and so there's a, there's also. There's a little, the, the grade on the west side of the, of the property is different than, than the east grade. On the east side and where the patio is, so there's some fill that's needed in order to compensate for, to meet from the street level. To um, the back and to meet where that um, that existing patio is. And um. I have the other ones for reference, but we'd also just like to point out that the, uh, the town engineer, Miller Pacific. Has determined the site can be safely developed from their letter. Um, and based on the recommended, recommendations from the, from the owners, geotechnical and civil engineers. The civil engineer also provided a letter, I don't remember if I saw it in the um, in the packet or not. About how it's better to, to have a um. To, to have the building with a. You know, at the minimum crawl space height above the site, rather than having it right at grade. Cause of the drainage problems that um, could arise. And it reduces the risk of localized flooding for both the property and the neighbors. So um, I don't, um, if in, I'm available for any questions if anyone has any.
Any questions from the commission to uh, their project architect? No questions of the architect from commission members? Okay.
Okay, just, just one question, really, um. The um, condition then that the basement, uh, or it's not really a condition, well, I think it's part of a condition. But the basement shall be eliminated from the project. Um, is not agreeable then to the, to the owner, is that right?
Uh, yes, that's correct.
And could I say something?
Yes.
This is the first I've heard about him wanting to install battery backups and everything in the basement and have a solar project. I'm fine if they want to keep the basement, but I want, would like you to include a condition in the resolution if you go that way. That the solar system and the battery backup systems be included with the, with the construction drawings that are submitted for the building permit. That's all.
Okay. Commissioner Green, any further uh, questions of the applicant at this time?
Not strictly questions, no, I have comments, but later.
Okay, any other commissioner questions or, or, or comments to the applicant? To the applicant's uh. Architect? Okay, uh, not hearing any others, I will note. That uh, in page eleven of the staff report. It is noted that uh, there were revised shade studies for the new proposed design. Provided by the applicant's consultant revealing that the design will not cast shadows. On the adjacent ADU's solar panels during either winter or summer. So I just uh, wanted to point that out, and uh, I'm very glad you, you answered the questions. Uh, Laura, about the basement and the slope and the need to elevate. Uh, for the amount of um. Infrastructure equipment that is, is required for the property, I also noticed there was nothing. In the interior plans that created a space for, for all of that, I know how much room they can take. Um, if there are no other questions of the applicant. Then uh, we can close the public hearing, if the applicant has no further comments and. Bring it back to the commission for discussion.
I don't believe we've opened this to public comment yet.
Uh, okay, we need to do that before we talk about.
Yes.
I'm sorry, Tamela, were you saying something?
No, that, I was just repeating what Commissioner Swift said, that there are uh, members of the public with their hand raised.
Yeah, okay, all right, then let's go to those uh, public comments first before we close the uh, the hearing. If you could call on them for us, please, Tamela.
The first will be Ru- Renu Mahultra. You should be able to.
Yes, hello. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi there, I live at number eighty five, and I've lived on Wood Lane for twenty years. And I have seen the street flood many times, and I would like to say categorically to start with. The town report says that Wood Lane floods only when there are obstructions of the culverts. Or storm drains, and that is simply not true, we had uh, flooding that. Uh, Owen at thirty nine discussed with Linda, and that was purely from the. Volume of flow of water coming from the watershed. I want to remind everybody that the water that flows here is not, it's a valley. And so we have water flowing from both sides as well as coming from the watershed through the creek, so there is um. There's, there's the surface water, and then when we have extreme events, we have um. The runoff from the hillsides, and I have a crawl space of about twenty four inches below my house. And I will have standing water there, so um, I raised that regarding the basement. And I know others on this street who have had furnace equipment in their crawl spaces. Have had um, significant issues because of um, the flooding that can happen there. So, and if you, and we have power outages, and sometimes there's been um. In years past, there's been occasions when we've had non planned outages that can last three or four days. So if you're on the shady side and you're planning on solar to uh, keep you going and run, run your pumps, that's just not gonna happen. Um, so you can tell already that uh, the, the water is a concern for me. And my, I'm lucky to be on the uh, the side of the. It's more southern side of the house, so my son is not so impacted as the Fords, uh, but. I um, have, we share this hillside, and in the past, we can see that there has been slides. And sloughing on that hillside, so from the beginning, my concern has been. Yes, there are things to mitigate the issues from a hillside, but what happens at the ends of those? In this case, we're gonna have a ditch, we'll have a catch fence that catches the debris. Obviously, that needs to be maintained, because um, if it doesn't, then when you have surface running on that. And you've got a big pile of mushy leaves, the water is not gonna get through that as well. When the street is flooded and you're, and you've got a big storm event. And the, as Owen describing, they've got a large wide property there, but what happens when the street is flooded? And you've got massive runoff from the hillside, if the curbside drain is blocked. Because of the flooding street. What happens when the water backs up? I don't see any of that being addressed in the civil engineering. Design, everyone refers to. Design. Everyone refers to rainwater flow. And on page forty-six of the report by the civil engineer, they're referencing. Standard rainfall and it seems that that is, it uses rainfall from nineteen forty-one to nineteen seventy-one. And I don't know the answer, but how does the last thirty years that we've experienced? Here compared to that reference rainfall. Maybe it's the same as an average, but certainly living in twenty years. It seems like when we have massive storm events, it's more than we had before. So I'm raising that, that what happens when you have this. Situation where the rainfall on the street. Covers up your undercurb drains and the water backs up. So the planned drainage for this hillside, and I know there's some good companies involved in that, there's no. Question about the way it's being calculated, but. What happens when we have extreme events which are happening on a regular basis? And the drains are backed up.
My apologies to interrupt the caller, I just need to know Chair for Gozo, time is up, would you like me to extend the time?
Uh, do we have a two or three minute limit?
That was actually four minutes. Okay, I've got three short questions.
If you could just wrap up your comments, that would be great.
Okay, so the V ditch to running across the back, the full width of the back. I'm asking again about the detail of what happens when the ditch ends and into our properties. We've got two bay trees that are just below the catch fence, they're quite tall, both leaning onto my ADU. They haven't been considered for tree cutting, I haven't had any discussion. Yet with our applicant, but I would suggest that those be considered for safety and also because of. Their close proximity to the proposed ditch. And then lastly, I would say that there is. The proposed parking position is right outside my kitchen window, that last. Where, where you're asking for a variance on parking. Thank you.
Thank you for those comments. Who is next, Tamela?
We have Heather Ford and I believe Heather Ford wants to show you something, so I will promote her now.
Thank you.
And Heather, you're on now.
Okay, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, great. So I'm Heather, I live at seventy-five Wood Lane. As I'm sure you all recall, we spoke out against the original design proposal at the meeting in August due to the. Onerous nature of that large two-story wall and the substantial impact that it would have on both our privacy and our sunlight. And since then, we've exchanged several communications with Mr. Friedman. And have viewed several versions of his plans, none of which substantially improved this situation for us. This latest version was not forwarded to us, but we inquired to Linda and were able to get a copy in advance of this meeting at the last minute. To our great disappointment, aside from giving some relief to our solar panels, which we appreciate. This latest proposal does not address our concerns and we are once again strongly opposed. Without living on Wood Lane, it may be difficult to fully understand, but due to the orientation of the valley and the steepness of its walls, we get. Very little sun for several months in the winter, especially on the south side of the street. The bottom of the valley incubates the cold and we spend a lot of money on heating and we wait with great anticipation for more sun. This was our most serious consideration when deciding to purchase this house, but we decided we could deal with it for a couple of months of very limited sun. However. Due to the tall two-story wall that is planned to sit at the minimum setback of five feet from our property line, it will directly shade all three of our bedrooms. Which are on the only side of our house that gets sun in the winter and it will result in a much longer period of time that we get almost no sun. Stretching this period from approximately two to three months to approximately six months of the year. This will greatly impact quality of life for us. Mr. Friedman has made mention of the fact that he lowered the height of the house. However, this refers to the height at the crest of the roof, which he changed to a flat roof. However, it is the side wall height. That has not changed and it is the height of this sidewall that causes the impact of shade on our property. So I've drawn a little sketch here and you can see that this peak of the roof does not, you know, it, it's okay. Whether it's there or whether it's flat, doesn't matter. When the sun comes down at the angle, it is the height of this wall, the wall that's next to our house. That is this very short distance from our fence that is casting the shadow. That was gonna be. Twenty-two feet eight inches tall before and it is now gonna be twenty-two feet eight inches tall. It's the same, it did not change. So when we look at the shade studies. You can see here that no longer is the roof or the roof of our ADU or our solar panels or the roof of our house shaded. But the yard and the sides of the house are. And so if you look at this side shade analysis, it shows it much more easily. Okay, this is the house proposed at. Seventy-nine, this is our ADU and this is our house. So there is sun on the roofs, but the sides of the house are shaded. Now if you look here, these windows. Are very falsely placed at the very top of the wall. If you look at the height of the wall here, our windows are two and a half feet off of the ground. So the windows are down here in the shade. So this, this is a false and misleading shade study. And so you can see that only the top portion of our west-facing wall receives sunlight and this is at twelve noon in the middle of the day. On the darkest, shortest day of the year. However, if you look, yeah, okay, sorry. Uh, so the windows in their true location would be almost. Would be mostly shaded at twelve noon and certainly for the rest of the day as the sun descends. There's also an absence of representation of windows on the west side of the ADU, there are windows here. And were they drawn on, in the figure, you would see that they are also completely shaded at twelve noon in the middle of the day. So at this time of year, the only valuable sun we get to our house is in the afternoon, at which time the proposed house will completely block. All sun to the west side of our house and all of its windows. Perhaps the easiest way to visualize the impact of the two-story wall will have on our house is to view the photos that we took out of the windows. Of our house in relation to the story poles. These photos were taken at the end of September, so halfway between the longest day of the year and the shortest day of the year. The story poles represent the eastern wall of the proposed house that is gonna sit at twenty-two feet eight inches tall. You can see that at the end of September, at approximately three PM. The sun drops below the poles of this window and is slightly above the pole at this window. Then. At four PM. The sun is well below the tops of the poles. What this means is that we will lose direct sunlight on the windows at the west side of our house. The only windows that do get sun from the end of September. All through the solstice in December and all the way around until the end of March. This means we'll be fully shaded in the afternoon for six months of the year and all day for the darkest months. This seems like an unfair burden. We understand that this new design likely checks most of the legal boxes and the design. Changes are being cast as though they are to our great benefit. But we have tried to explain how this updated design has not addressed our major concerns and is still going to have a very significant negative impact on the quality of life at seventy-five Wood Lane. This really matters to us. The desire for the new property owners to fit a twenty-two hundred square foot house plus a two-car garage. And a sizable ADU on this narrow lot with a small amount of buildable, buildable space. Has caused them to create a design that is overbearing to the neighbors. The placement of the garage at the back of the property necessitates a long driveway on the west side, causing the house to be shifted maximally towards our property line and forward. The wall, as it is designed now, will create an imposing and awkward presence over our property, not just the shade. It will be significantly dark and cold and our house will feel as though it is sitting under a large, tall and imposing structure. When you look at this picture, it's important to understand that this picture is not to scale. Because it was a Google Street Foot, uh, uh, Google Street car photo. You can see that the, the houses have been stretched up above, this is a six-foot high fence and this. Uh, railing here is three feet off the ground, so it makes it look like it's nine feet off the ground.
My apologies for interrupting, the time is up, would you like to go, while more time Chair for Gozo?
No, if you could just wrap up your comments briefly, please.
Okay, okay, so yes, so this is just, I just want you not to take this. Uh, scale because our house is fourteen feet, this house is twenty-three feet, this house is thirteen feet, this is not an appropriate picture. I'll just wrap up here, the design. The design both requires a variance to allow for minimum setbacks of five feet on both sides. The fa, this fact alone is telling of the impact they're suggesting to put upon the neighbors. If they wanna prioritize a two-story house, it could be set in the middle of the lot, that would make a difference for us and it could be pushed back. So as to have minimal impact on those around it. Several of the two-story houses on this block are positioned that way on their lots. But once again, they're asking to fit a large house and a large garage and a large ADU on this small lot at the expense of the neighbors. We are not against construction of a new home at seventy-nine, but we feel very strongly that the proposed design causes an unfair loss of value and quality of life for us. On our property.
Thank you for your comments.
And we do have another hand raised. This is Michael Simler, Simler perhaps? You are allowed to talk, please go ahead and open your mic.
Yes, hi, I just wanted to voice my general support for the project. Um, I know many people in this town who have. Tried to get projects through the planning commission and have just been stopped at every step of the way. And I think while I do. Value the important job of the commission in terms of not letting development get out of hand. I do also think that it does. Pose, you know, economic burdens on people who pay property taxes in the town. And I don't. I don't. I don't think that, you know, somebody's concerns next door that. They're gonna lose some sun even though they knew that that lot had potential to be built at any time. Is, is any valid reason to stop the development of this house? Um, if they were really so concerned, they had the option to purchase the lot themselves when it was on the market. And maintain all this own exposure that they wanted. And that's, that's all I have to say.
Thank you for your comments, any, do we have any further hands up, Tamela?
I do not see, oh, one just raised her hand, Fairfax resident. Please go ahead and unmute yourself.
Am I unmuted now?
Yes, you are.
Yeah, I just wanted to kinda.
Can you state your name, please?
Uh, if it's okay, I'd rather stay anonymous. Is that okay?
Go ahead, well, make your comment, you have two, you have two minutes, three minutes.
Yeah, I just wanna say, I've, I've also talked with many people in Fairfax that have tried to develop their residences. And it seems it's, the process is incredibly difficult and strenuous. Seems like Mr. Friedman has done his due diligence, has done lots of reports, lots of designs, lots of. Kinda everything and, you know, I, I totally understand what people at eighty-five and seventy-five said. And they have very, very incredibly valid points, I think the sun is. Is super important, being someone that doesn't get a lot of sun on my house, I totally understand that, but it's also. I kinda knew what I was getting into when I purchased a house. On the north aspect of the valley, I know that it's not good for sun. I know that solar panels don't make sense on my house. So I wouldn't make that investment, so I, I, I understand their point of getting sun, but it's also to Michael's point. You know, you kinda knew what you were getting into when you purchased your home. Again. You know, this, this house doesn't seem incredibly unreasonable, he's staying within all of his setbacks, he's, he's, you know. Seems like he's paid for the variances that are needed. And he's trying to stay within the confines of zoning ordinances and laws that the town has put forward. The fact that it's, you know, the meeting back in August and now here we are in January, it's just. That's a lot of time that he's been probably paying for this house, paying for the mortgage, property taxes, everything. And not being able to, you know, live in the house or get any of the rewards from purchasing it. You know, I think if the, if the owners would like meet with him, I don't, I don't know if they could do that. You know, all spitball ideas, it's like that's something so much better than. Like paying for all this stuff and then all of a sudden you get poo-pooed and shot down. And then, you know, months later you go back to it, I don't know, I'm, I'm, I'm in support, I think it's, it's adding value and adding to the. General homes in Fairfax, it's, it seems like a nice project, that's, that's all I have to say.
I appreciate your coming out, everyone, to. To comment, any other hands up, Tamela, out there?
I do not see any other hands at this time.
Okay, any final questions from the commission to the applicant before I close the public hearing? And not hearing any.
Actually, Ms. Chair Newton has her hand raised and.
Oh, okay.
Excuse me, Chair, Commissioner Newton and Commissioner Green.
Sorry, I can't find the buttons to raise my hand or unmute.
I see you, Commissioner. Go for it.
I have a number of questions for the applicants. The architects, whoever, in terms of the basement issues, if you could respond to the issues that were raised about. Putting all your water heater, your electrical equipment, things like that in the basement. Which is always gonna be more liable for, for flooding if, you know, we are gonna be getting. Increased, you know. Weather events as we move forward in time, I think it's a, it's an important question and then. If you could also talk to the parking and the location of the garage. Vis a vis the requirements that the planning commission asked at the last meeting. You know, we talked about putting more greenscape in the front. And these are reflected on the staff report, first couple pages, there's a list. Of all the various things that we asked the applicant to do. And so I'm interested in what your neighbor said about. The required driveway. On that side of the house, push, on the other side of the house, pushing the house closer in their direction. And, you know, whether or not. The commission's desire for more greenscape in the front. May have. You know, created a situation where, as the neighbor said, maybe if it was pushed more into the center. Of the lot, it would have less of an impact. And so finally, you know, one of the things that I think is also. Something we made clear was about the. You know, our desire that the, the applicants reach out to the neighbors. And in between that. Uh, planning commission meeting and this one. You know, how much of an effort was really made to reach out to those neighbors and come up with some solutions? So those are my questions, thanks.
Okay, so am I, okay, I see I'm talking, okay, thank, thank you, Mimi, for your questions. So, and the, the property owner has, he has texted me also with his, his. Responses, so I'm able to get. His point of view is, as well. So he, regarding the basement. He's planning to. To use waterproofing. State-of-the-art waterproofing in order to minimize any kind of flooding issues. You know, I've also seen where you can also, you sometimes, I mean, you need, you need space, usually a minimum crawl space is not enough. From mechanical equipment, but it is possible that you can suspend them from the floor system. And things like that so that you can, you know, elevate them off, but we are going to, it is going to be waterproofed. So that's how he's planning to, to deal with that issue. I think I tried to explain in my presentation about how the. When we moved the building forward to the setback because previously we had the parking spaces in the front yard. So we had, we had twenty feet, so then we had, we moved them behind and so that did shift. The garage back, but we are five feet from the property line, I mean, and so we've only got. from the property line. I mean, and so we've only got, we have a narrow driveway at, um, ten or twelve feet wide. So we really can't move, um, you know, the building over that much. I mean, it really is a minimum type of footprint. We have a fifty-foot wide lot, which is really minimum in order to try to, to get everything to fit. So, um, and so
I guess.
And Mr. Friedman did make several attempts to talk to the neighbors. He did share his, his, um, redesign ideas. And we also, he, he also made changes in order, in response to the neighbor's comments. So, um, and I just got a, uh, comment here from Kobe that we can't push the house back anymore because then the cars can't get in and out. So anyway, we tried to make everything fit and try to be, you know, um, respectful and try to, to fit, to make everything fit, but the way, the best way that we could in the limited amount of, of, of space that we have because the back of the property does steep, slope up very steeply. So I think I got all of your questions. So let me, if I missed anything, let me know.
Uh, Mimi, I think she covered your questions. Was there anything missing? Uh?
No, that's great. Thank you.
Okay. And Commissioner Swift, you had your hand up with some questions? Or comments?
Commissioner Green.
Oh, Commissioner Green. Thank you.
They look alike.
Okay, thank you. Um, if the, let me just posit a hypothetical. If the basement were eliminated, would, would, would that have any effect on the neighbors' issue with sunlight?
Um, no.
No.
Because we've got a, um, we, the finished floor is, was determined by using the, the minimum eighteen-inch crawl space from the natural grade where it sits now. So the base, and not the whole area of under the house is gonna be basement. It's just, it runs from, um, it's basically in the center portion where he's got the elevator on one side and he put the stairway on the other side. So it just kind of connects between those two spaces in order to put those, the utilities that he wants in the, um, elevator pit. So the basement, previously on the drawings, I kinda dashed in where the basement is. So the basement is all you know, below grade and it doesn't really have anything to do with, with how high the building is.
Okay, thank you very much.
Also, oh, well, were there any other commissioner questions for the applicant?
I don't see any hands raised.
Okay. Not hearing any more commissioner comments, I will, uh, I will remind the commission that there is an issue of uh, potential future disability that the owner was concerned about. And given the slope of the property and the fact that it requires stairs just to get even to the first floor or the slope to the car, that was something they had to work out. And I believe, uh, the elevator on the ground floor could in fact also be a, a accessibility issue moving forward were it, were it to be raised to a different level on, on the site. But, uh, uh, I just remembered that discussion we had some time back with the applicant. But, uh, thank you all for your comments. Um, not seeing any other hands up, we will go ahead and close the public hearing and bring it back to discussion amongst commissioners. Uh, if you have, uh, any comments to make uh, to other commissioner, uh, other commissioners or any discussion, uh, please raise your hands and Tamala will call you.
Commissioner Green.
Thank you. Uh, I, I think overall here that the, uh, owner has kind of bent over backwards to, um, accommodate a lot of the requests we had, the, the, um, that Mimi pointed out, uh, on page three. Um, you know, and you can't, and another thing is, of course, uh, there's no ones, th- there's no law here in Fairfax that says we, we have to provide access to light and vision and all that kind of thing. Um, and I think that they've done a pretty good job redesigning, recoloring. Um, and I think a lot of thought went into this and those are my comments really, and you can kinda see where I'm going.
Thank you. Other commissioner comments?
Commissioner Jansen.
Yeah, I concur with that. Um, I think the architects and the owner, they've done a great job to address what they could. Um, I'd like to point out a few things. The, um, it's of course always unfortunate if, uh, shade is being thrown on a structure by another structure, but that is true for all of them. Um, in, in Wood Lane, there are many houses that are this size, two stories, that are very close to the neighboring house. Um, right in the neighborhood, right around it, number sixty-nine, eighty-nine, ninety-three, they have the same condition. So it's not unusual. The lots tend to be very small. Um, having said that, they did actually address the issue because if you look at the, uh, the gutter line, the total length of the gutter along the property at seventy-five, that used to be forty-seven feet long. It is now twenty-eight feet long. And that is the point that actually throws the shadow. So that's a forty percent reduction in length. So the whole different configuration does, um, um, improve it. It does not completely take it away. You would not be able to build a second story if you wanted to do that. And I think that would be unreasonable to ask. Um, so, um, that having said, there was a lot of discussion about the basement. Um, I think because of the planning issues, raising the house a little bit is, seems to be good practice. And I think that's supported by the engineer in the town. Um, making a basement so you don't have to import soil seems to be smart. You, you, you prevent a lot of trouble. And whether or not that's waterproof properly, I think is not for this commission. That's for the owner. If he does it right, he will not have a problem. And if not, he will, but we do not have to decide for that. So I think the, what I look at, I think is, is a very good response. And, um, it's hard to push it further than that. Um, that's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Jansen. Um, who's next with comments from the commission?
Commissioner Kelly.
Miss Commissioner Kelly?
Thank you. Um, I think that I'm gonna agree with my fellow commissioners, uh, Green and Jansen. Uh, generally, I, I think that the applicant has made uh, some revisions per comments from this commission last time. And I think that, um, that a number of the changes are good for the neighborhood as a whole. Not only, um, for the project and making concessions to their direct neighbors. Um, but I think it's actually a better building for the neighborhood. I think the, the shorter, uh, facade, the, the lower facade of, at the street and pulling the front porch to the street rather than having cars there uh, will be great for people walking by. Um, it's a much better scale. Uh, it offers a little bit of, um, friendly neighborhood opportunity. Um, I know that the parking, uh, adjacent to the neighbor in the back is maybe not, um, the best, but it's better than having a building there next to your window in the, in the kitchen to the neighbor next door. Um, and I, I think that it has, moving the ADU above the garage also is a good site response. It's, uh, decreased the bulk of the house, um, which I think again is, is a good neighborhood response. Um, regarding the site, uh, grading, I think that it's pertinent. Uh, as people that have been on Wood Lane during a rain event know, uh, there's a lot of water coming down that street off of that hill, um, that is an issue. And I think the ability to raise that site a little bit, uh, is probably, like I said, pertinent. Um, with regard to the, the basement, um, I agree with, uh, Commissioner Jansen about just the, the use of that, uh, soil so that you don't have to import and, uh, dirty our streets in the town as you're importing fill, et cetera, is probably a good solution. Um, I am concerned about the drainage from the site. Uh, I, I see that there's some drainage analysis included with the package, but I don't see, um, how the water will really be detained on the site. If the analysis does say that it will be, uh, but there's not really any evidence of how that's gonna happen yet. And I think to me, that's the primary concern for the site design and for the neighborhood. Um, that being able to, uh, the site right now is largely vegetated. The, the water that lands on the site tries anyway to percolate into the site. What we see now is it's gonna be largely hardscaped. And so I think we need some evidence that there's gonna be some control of that rainwater that lands on the site itself. Uh, so I, I'd like to, uh, consider for us to consider a condition of approval of, um, detention, site water detention details being reviewed by the town engineer prior to a building permit. Um, I don't know, um, I think I'd like to have a little bit of discussion to see if other folks, uh, believe that that's also an issue. Um, but I think it's worth discussion. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Uh, Commissioner Swift or Newton, any final comments before I make mine?
Yeah.
Well, go ahead.
Um, so on the sunlight issue, I think that it's part of what we have to weigh in terms of people's interests and, you know, I do think that sunlight is important for a lot of reasons. We get vitamin D from it and we learned through the pandemic how important vitamin D is and access to sunlight has been the subject of lawsuits in places like New York where people block each other's sun. And so I wouldn't disregard access to sunlight. Um, but I think it's part of the things that we weigh in terms of looking at the interests of people that are at play here in these decisions. And, you know, to the extent that the homeowner uh, and their neighbor are both talking about their homes where they wanna live, you know, it's like one of the most important uh, interests we have in town, you know? Um, maybe life and liberty being a little bit more important, but, you know, my, my home is where, you know, the heart is or whatever. It's, it's, uh, it's really important to all of us. So, um, I think in looking at the overall big picture here and all the things we asked the homeowner to do in terms of uh, reevaluating the initial design, you know, I think they've made some progress. And I hear, uh, what the other commissioners are saying about, you know, their decision, what to put in their basement. Um, and so, uh, I think we've got a condition that Linda mentioned about, uh, having their solar and battery backup be added to the design drawings. And I would recommend if you were gonna adopt this ordinance that we do that. Um, and also I totally agree with the drainage issues that Commissioner Kelly raised and would love to hear, you know, the specifics of his ideas on that. I also think maintaining that system, you know, I think getting it reviewed, uh, as part of, you know, a continuing obligation is a good idea, but I also think we could add maintenance in there, uh, as well somehow. Um, I think that's it. Thanks.
Commissioner Swift?
Thank you.
So a couple of comments. I'm, um, concerned as Commissioner Kelly is, you know, with the drainage, um, there and one of the things we've done previous on other, um, applications is that any kind of a hillside retention system is completed and signed off on, um, before any other aspects of the building site are worked on so that we assure that the first thing that is done is addressing, you know, that hillside retention area. So, um, I would want to consider that if we should go forward um, in a resolution approving this project. Um, and then I have some specific comments on the resolution itself and, uh, changes to it if we get to that point.
Can we hold, can we hold on those until we finish our, our comments and then come back to the nitty-gritty of the language of the res-
That's what I was gonna say, other than, um, assuring that as a part of this project that that retention system and that hillside gets addressed, um, approved and completed before anything else on the project is started.
Okay. Was that, uh, the, the last of your comments, Commissioner Swift? Thank you all. If so, then I-
Commissioner Green does have his hand raised again.
Oh, okay.
Jansen.
We'll give him, we'll give him another minute. Commissioner Green?
Yeah, I just wanted to add, I, I agree with what Commissioner Kelly said. I had not been aware of that situation with the drainage. So I agree, we need to, I think the solution is also there that, that we can have the town, um, geologist or engineer, uh, you know, sign off on that before, uh, building starts. Um, and just, just one other thing is we, we, we all have to live with shade in the winter. Um, trees, whatever it might be. In my house, it's tall trees cause shade almost all the time, all day long in the winter. It's just how it is. And, you know, and it's part of living in Fairfax. And I, we do not ignore and the, the neighbors', um, issues. But what, what I think some of us are trying to do is see if it's possible for the owner to fulfill his uh, right to build there in the manner that, that they see fit and within our ordinances. And, and we're, we're fairly uh, cons, we're fairly, uh, well off in that regard. Uh, but we do hear about the light and air situation. Um, vitamin D, you know, you really need to go outside to get vitamin D and not get your sun through a window. Um, one more comment though, if you're gonna put batteries in anything, make sure the heat, the airflow around those batteries is maintained. This is a big deal, especially with some of the current batteries, some of the new ones without cobalt, maybe. But think about the airflow around those batteries. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner Green. Uh, I will wrap up this.
Jansen has his hand raised as well. I'm sorry to interrupt you.
Who does? Who does?
Jansen. Commissioner Jansen.
Okay, uh, Jans, uh, Commissioner Jansen, briefly, if you could make your comments?
Yeah, I actually have a question for staff based on what I heard. Um, isn't it true that, so we're talking about the civil engineering of the drainage system. We're talking about solar installations. Aren't those type of engineering, that seems that are, uh, uh, governed on the building department part?
Yeah, the, the construction drawings are reviewed and approved by the building department. So if you include a condition that the town engineer review them, the town engineer will review everything. We also have coastland engineering is our plan checker. So they also review the set. So you actually kind of have a dual review if you include that condition about the town engineer and they, they all look at drainage. They all look at the construction drawings.
But even if there would be, if we don't put a condition in, they would still do that?
They would still do that, right?
Right.
The only thing, the only thing that wouldn't happen if you didn't include the condition is on some projects, if you don't include that condition, the town engineer won't look at things again. It'll just be reviewed by the plan checker at coastland engineering. So.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, it's my turn. And what I would like to do in light of the concerns expressed, uh, not only by, uh, neighbors of the development, but some of our planning commissioners is summarize some of the information provided on page seven of our staff report that, uh, speaks of the geotechnical report that recommends walls be provided with adequate back drainage and drainage coming from the hillside above the site be intercepted by swales and directed away from residential improvements. Further, that the swell and recommended drainage improvements include a sub-drain that runs the length of the rear retaining wall, directing water from the hillside above it to a drainage inlet that runs through the wall and into a 24-inch retention system at the southeast corner of the level portion of the rear yard. After the retention system, the water flows through a sloped underground drainage pipe to the front of the site underneath the undeveloped portion of the right-of-way and into the street gutter. Although not shown on the preliminary plan, water from the roof is to be collected from the house and garage roofs and deposited into downspouts, then collected in closed conduits and discharged at an approved er- erosion-resistant outlet away from the improvements. Further, further, the geotechnical suggestion that the level portion of the site be blanketed with fill with coluvium slope wash, alluvium and bedrock with the fill and upper portions of the deposits being of low expansion potential and that they need to become denser. The recommendation is that the structures be supported by helical piers or drilled, cast in place, reinforced concrete piers which extend through the weak deposits into the underlying bedrock or approved firm alluvium. A subsequent report by the geotechnical engineer reiterates that localized discontinuous layers of sands may be present within the deeper alluvium and they are to be, excuse me, that's why the foundations are to be drilled and cast in place in reinforced concrete to, uh, ex- and, and that the owner accepts the risk of future maintenance or repairs associated with the differential movement of, uh, the shallow soils. Additionally, uh, there is a comment about a neighbor who used a mat foundation built directly on natural grade that, uh, the staff report suggests, and this, uh, I will say was prior to some information that came to light this evening. Uh, the staff report suggests that this at-grade mat foundation could be used to avoid the need to fill and slope the site, which the engineer says to stop the filled grade from sending drainage towards the neighboring residence at 85 Wood Lane, the western side property line is still proposed to be retained with a two-foot wall retaining wall along portions of the east and west property lines. The hydrology calculations have been drafted extensively and redesigned without creating geologic, hydraulic, or seismic hazards for residents, neighboring properties, and street improvements. It is included in the resolution recommending that the redesigned project construction be reviewed by the town engineer prior to the building permit to ensure that the design and drainage system comply with the recommendations of the project engineer. The drainage system of this development could be redesigned to not require filling of the site going with that at-grade mat system, but is not the primary recommendation of the geotechnical engineer. So this was information that came to us before staff recommended that the basement is not necessary. However, after clearly reading this, and I took the time to read it in detail to assuage the neighbors' concerns that this water is going to be flowing from the hillside onto their properties. I also live in a house that has about a three-foot crawl space that turns into a mini swimming pool with floodwaters. And the tricky thing is when you live close to a creek, not only can you be flooded by waters coming in from the creek, but water rises from the earth to fill that crawl space because our water tables are so high. And so because of all of these reasons I have just stated, I believe we should, we can and should make the finding to approve the basement and the fill that's taken from the basement from the very same site and dispersed on the same site to create the necessary slope that will greatly enhance and improve the drainage, not only for this property, but for all adjacent properties and those I would imagine down the street. I also agree that the owner and their architect have gone a very long way to address every single concern that I have heard this evening and last month. And they've done an excellent job at doing so. They've lowered the height of the building. It's one of the lowest houses in the entire neighborhood. It's not one of the highest. The two adjoining neighbors' houses are higher. Not only that, this house is being developed and constructed under the strictest of regulations that no other neighbor has been required to meet. Adjacent houses are built on the property line. Adjacent houses do not have the drainage system that is proposed to take care of their own drainage, let alone the rest of the neighborhood and the hillside. I think these, these owners and this design team have gone out of their way. And I do believe that I can find the rationale to make the finding that the basement is a necessary component of the drainage system and the infrastructure of their elevator, their furnace, their hot water heater, and their potential solar batteries. Uh, which by the way, if you buy Teslas, y- y- you know, i- it's, it's, uh, uh, really state of the art. And so I believe and I recommend that our planning commission make that finding to approve the basement, which I know the code says the focus is to reduce offhauling of soil, but also in this instance, it reduces the offhaul. It eliminates the in-haul of 65 tons, which is probably 65 trucks coming up to that neighborhood, and it solves the drainage problem. And for those reasons, I believe we can make that finding and all the other findings that staff suggests can be made, uh, and allowing the basement to be constructed as indicated. Uh, yes, I know Fairfax is a tight little community. Uh, I have a two-bedroom, uh, wall outside my kitchen. Uh, people have the right to build, these people could build up to 28 feet high as many of their neighbors had, and I think they're down to 22 feet. So is it perfect? Is anything perfect in this world? I leave my comments at that and, uh, if we're ready to close the planning commission discussion, does someone have a motion to make to help move us forward at this hour?
Commissioner Newton has her hand raised.
Well, thank you, thank you Chair Fergoso. Um, I, uh, I think I heard Commissioner Swift say she had some comments on the resolution. I only, I only have one little typo I saw that was, uh, paragraph 49, which would not require a lot more renumbering because we don't go, uh, that far at the end of the resolution past 49. We go up to-
Thank you.
All right. And, uh, and that's it. Thanks. Over.
Okay, Commissioner Swift, you have some, so do we, do you want to hear a motion or do you want to talk about changes to the resolution first?
I want to talk about the resolution first.
You go with it.
Um, so page 10, number 49, it has town engineer, or is that what?
One Mimi just did. Mimi just caught that one. That correction.
She was just taking the numbering off?
And renumbering the rest of them.
Okay, all right. Okay. Um, so if it seems that the commission is in favor of retaining the basement, um, then you would be removing that on page two under the excavation permit.
Page two of the reso, you mean?
Yes, is that what I said? I didn't say?
You just said page two.
I'm sorry, page two of the reso.
Got it.
Um, page three, the tree removal. It says the trees being removed is proposed for removal in compliance with all the considerations. So the only thing that speaks to is keeping the oak um, on the property. I would want to change that to the trees proposed for removal and then in parentheses identify what those are, which would be the one olive and the one apple tree.
Got it.
So it's clear as to what the tree committee um, did.
Got it.
Um, I would want a condition that the retention system on the hillside be completed before any other work is done, completed and approved before any other work is done on the project. I, I think we, I think, let me finish. I think we did that with an application, um, on Wood Lane prior to this application.
If the geotech confirms, so I don't have a problem with that.
And my last one is 53.
Page 53? What 53?
Page 10, number 53.
Okay, gotcha.
Where it talks about the drainage maintenance system, the drainage system maintenance agreement, um, be approved by the town engineer and recorded, and then a copy provided. It's not clear on that, that what the town is looking for is a copy showing that the agreement was actually recorded. So a copy of the recorded um, system.
Okay, I've got that.
And then the last one, um, would be, um, I would agree with having the basement plans submitted to include the solar infrastructure. So, um, the drawings including the, the batteries as part of the mechanicals.
Okay. Any other? Those are good, uh, good edits, Commissioner Swift. Hearing those and all our comments, is there a motion?
We do have two more commissioners with their hands up, Commissioner Kelly and Commissioner Hanson.
Okay. Commissioner Kelly? Commissioner Kelly?
Sorry, I was muted there. Sorry, I'd like to just call everyone's attention to the, um, item number 50, uh, regarding the town engineer review of the final stamp and sign project. Um, I, this, this is a condition that really, um, validates what another professional says is there. And what I am interested in is a condition that, uh, shows what is planned to be there and is approved by the town engineer prior to installation. So I would like to, uh, add a condition that, um, the town engineer review, the site water detention plan and details, including the hillside runoff, the roof drainage, and calculations for the sump pump flows.
Prior to building permit?
Exactly.
The G, the town engineer to review the consultant's plans. Okay. Did you have another?
And I went, uh, I just want to be very specific with the wording there, the, the detention plan and details.
And would you?
Calculations for the sump pump flows.
Are there sump pumps?
They're gonna have to be.
If, if they're gonna have a basement and a, um, elevator below grade, they better have some-
Should have a sump pump. I couldn't live without mine. Okay. And, uh, was that all, Commissioner Kelly?
That's it. Thank you.
Commissioner Jensen, you had a final comment?
Uh, yeah, this is, um, one of the conditions, if I understand it correctly, that, uh, Commissioner Swift added regarding the drainage system to be complete before, uh, uh, the rest of the construction commences. Um, I think that's not possible because the retention system on the uphill side is part of the foundation and the backside of the ADU unit. So that is impossible.
That, I, I agree with you. That was my comment as well, that we should leave it to the town engineer to determine at what point each of those elements must be completed- must be completed, and then he would inspect and approve each component. So the, uh, Commissioner Swift's suggestion, uh, could be modified to say that the town engineer would review and approve of each of the plans and inspect and approve at each phase of completion. Does that make more sense?
Um, let's hear from Linda on that.
Yeah, I just, Cindy, I, I think what you were trying to say, and it is a pretty common condition, um, that the planning commission requires that the parking improvements be installed, you know, prior to the start of construction. And so that garage is part of the ADU, which is attached to the wall at the back of the site. So I think if you said the parking and the retaining wall at the rear of the site have to be built, you know, a lot of times people put all their money into the house, and then they run out of money, and then we never get the parking built. So I just wanted to throw that out there in case you wanted to word it that way.
And, and that's fine. What, as you said, I don't, um, anything that's connected, that's gonna be connected to that hillside drainage system, which as you said, you know, might be the parking and, and the ADU and the foundation be done first, so that that is in place before other aspects that aren't tied to that.
The only thing.
You can't, I'm not sure you can necessarily do those first.
See, I think you can do the drainage at the, at the rear of the site, but you can't do the drainage at the front of the site when they're trying to put in foundations and stuff for the house. They're not gonna be able to complete that front portion until after the foundation for the house is in, but I.
It will all be done, it will all be ru- reviewed, it will all be approved by the town engineer. He will review each phase of it, he will approve each phase of completion. I don't know what more we can ask.
I, I would like to have that in there, um, as Linda mentioned, working on the, the parking and that hillside.
So the drainage, the drainage and the, and the, um, I forget what it's called now, you know, the, the fence to catch soil that might come down, and the drainage that's behind the garage and the wall could go in, right? That's not gonna be disturbed while the garage is built. Then they can do the rest of the house and the front drainage.
That's fine. Yeah, that would work for me.
What about the rest of the commission?
Uh, I, I think we, you, you know, uh, I'm not a, neither of us are geotechnical engineers. I think we leave it to the geotecs and the town engineer to determine how and when and where it happens. As long as we know our town engineer is on top of every step and and reviewing the progress of the work.
Yeah, Commissioner Kelly and Commissioner Green have raised their hands.
Is, uh, so is the language clear? I mean, let me, let me propose this idea too, is that what, um, Commissioner Fregoso read into the record, which is already really on the record, is, is that what, if that were like incorporated into uh, the, um, permit and say, you know, the town engineer will review the, the pros- process as as feasible, um, that the following are occurring, and then kind of quote this, this, um, engineering report and that part. Would that be possible? Then you're really specific. I don't know if that's the language we want, but, uh, or if we need something additional. Um, but I think what we need to do is, you know, this is a huge part of this project. I mean, this, this drainage system allows the basement, it keeps the project going, and it's really important. So we want.
That is all, that is all a part of the Hill Area Residential Development Permit, as, as outlined in the staff report.
You know, if we, if we think about this, I think they're gonna have to get their large construction equipment in, and they're gonna have to build that back wall and the retention first, because they're not gonna be able to get past the house to do it after that construction on the house starts. So I mean, I think it's gonna happen anyway, so you, I think you would be okay conditioning it, that the drainage in the back wall and the garage get built first. I think that's the way it's gonna have to happen anyway.
And Commissioner Kelly does have his hand raised.
Commissioner. I was just trying to, hi there. Um, so it seems like, um, Commissioner Swift, um, item is really about the hillside, um, and that hillside drainage. And I was just trying to look through the various, uh, permits applied for, and I thought that there was a retaining wall permit. Sorry, I'm trying to scroll here. And it seems that this could be, that condition could be part of that permit quite very easily. Uh, that all of that back section of the hillside would be, is gonna require retain- retention, uh, and this drainage system could be required of that. But I'm not finding it now as I'm scrolling.
There are retaining wall height variances, where at one point they have to go up to nine feet behind the ADU and the garage.
What you're looking for is on page twelve of the staff report, excavation permit and retaining wall height variance discussion. And since we've had a lot of, you know, I'm not an architect, I'm, I'm not sure about the engineering or geo- geotechnical aspects of this myself. But I think what we need to do is just make the language of the permit clear enough so that it incorporates what language it has to, to make sure that what I meant by earlier, when I said as feasible, you're saying the rear part needs to be built up first. So let's just say that instead of making it vague. And so have, you know, the rear part will be built up first, and then the, then the drainage can be, uh, you know, however we have to word that, and I'm not sure the best way to do that.
So you could say the parking, the parking structure, the ADU, the rear retaining wall, and the rear drainage behind the retaining wall should be built as the first part of the project. And that's very similar to what you've done on other projects, where you've required the parking to be built first.
Right, that, that language. And then, and then the, once that's approved, then they can go ahead with the rest. I think that has to be conditional though, on approval, so they can go ahead with the rest.
Right.
And I just want to mention Commissioner Jansen and Commissioner Newton have their hands raised.
Great, let's have another round. Commissioner Newton? Are you on?
I am, but Commissioner Jansen's been waiting patiently, so let's let him go first.
Alright, thank you. Um, yeah, I, it, on a higher level, I have a concern. The, um, we care about the end results. We don't care on how you get there. Um, so building methodology is not something I believe we should be dictating, unless there is a particularly public interest in doing so. I don't see that here, and requiring a contractor to do something first before something else might run into a myriad of problems or cost consequences. And, and again, I do not see the public interest for us dealing with this. Leave it to the contractor, how he best sees fit to put pieces together.
I whole, I wholeheartedly agree with you.
Someone wanna make a motion?
Well, my hand is raised so that I could do that. Uh, I would like to make a motion that we adopt. Oh, no, I gotta find the name of it here, hold on. Um. Resolution number twenty-two, number one, zero-one. A resolution of the Fairfax Planning Commission conditionally approving application number twenty-one seventeen for a Hill Area Residential Development perp- permit, design review permit, excavation permit, and tree removal permit, and a minimum and combined side yard setback and retaining wall height variance for a residence at seventy-nine Wood Lane with some changes. Uh, renumbering starting at paragraph forty-nine, uh, removing the reference to the, uh, condition that they're redesigned without the basement. Uh, include the references to the trees that were referenced. Include in condition number twelve on page. Hold on. Page six of the draft reso in our packets, uh, that prior to issuance of an occupancy permit, uh, the final, the following shall be completed, uh, and include not only the geotechnical engineer field checking the completed project, but reviewing, uh, the schedule and plans at each phase of, uh, the project's construction, as I think our chair had recommended. And add that similar language in twelve B that would have the, the, uh, planning department and town engineer, you know, field check the completed project as well as the schedule and design for the the project at each phase of the construction, thereby leaving it to them to decide on the order of, uh, that work. Um, but to make it clear that the, um, hillside, uh, retention, uh, be included in that, um, which I don't think it's specifically mentioned in either, uh, twelve A or twelve B. So I would add uh, that to twelve A and reference the hillside retention there. Um, they do have the reference in twelve A to the rating and drainage elements, and I know Commissioner Kelly had pointed out some other places that you might address this, but uh, I would also add in this section, the language about the, uh, details and calculations for the sump pump flows that, uh, Commissioner Kelly referenced, uh, you know, requiring the same, uh, sort of during the phases of construction, review and approval. Hold on, I think, uh, that we also include the copy of the recorded uh, drainage document mentioned by Commissioner Swift, um, as well as, uh, adding the condition about the solar uh, and battery backup.
And all mechanical infrastructure.
And mechanical infrastructure being added to the design drawings, uh, per Linda's recommendation. Um, and that would be my motion to.
Excellent motion. Do we have a second?
Well, before the second, can I just ask real quick, is section one B eliminated? Did the basement is eliminated from the project?
Yes, that was covered.
Then I'll second the motion.
Wonderful. Can we have a roll call on the motion, Linda, before my battery dies?
Okay, Green?
Hi.
Jansen?
Hi.
Kelly?
Hi.
Newton?
Hi.
Swift?
Hi.
Chair Fregoso?
Aye. The motion passes unanimously. There is, however, a ten-day appeal period, the owner should be aware. And, uh, anyone who wants to file that can do so with the town clerk for a fee of about six hundred and fifty dollars. And, uh, that concludes this item. Uh, excellent work, everybody. It was, it was, uh, a, a very interesting project, and I have about two seconds left on my battery, so let's take a break, let's take a five-minute break. It is nine oh five, we come back at nine ten.
Hi, Norma, this is Janet.
Hi, Janet, I'm, I'm back. Are we all back?
I don't know. I don't know if we're all back, I'm getting.
We were, we were on a break, we're all just now coming back.
Right. Now, what I'd like to do though, since it's a really late hour, I'd love to continue that last item, that SB nine item. There are no time constraints on that.
Uh, okay. Uh, okay.
I just saw the staff report that was written for that, and it's got a bunch of errors in it, so.
Well, that was one of the reasons I called.
Yeah, it's, it's got some issues, so, uh, let's, let's continue that, and then.
Do we need to make a motion to continue?
Yes, if you do that, that'd be great. Continue it to the next meeting.
Okay, and should we do that prior to taking the next two items?
It would probably be helpful if there's anybody waiting for that.
Why, why don't we, why don't we, well, e- everybody should be coming back on here pretty soon. Why don't we, uh, get started, and we'll just briefly introduce you, Linda, and, uh, you can recommend that we continue to the next meeting, and we can take a quick poll. Linda, did you hear? What Janet and I were just discussing? Okay, so, uh, yeah, apparently I had a number of questions about that report, and given the late hour and several of the questions that came up, and the fact that it's not an urgency matter, it can come to us the next week. So is everyone back?
Recording in progress.
I have no way of seeing who's there, Tamela.
Everyone's back.
Yes, everyone's back.
Alright, so, we're back to our planning commission meeting, and, uh, our, uh, legal, well, first of all, let me say something I didn't mention earlier for the commission and the public. Our planning director, Ben Berto, could not join us this evening. Uh, however, we have, of course, our senior planner, Linda Neal, as our main support, and Tamela Fish, our tech support, who we could also not do this without. We have an item that would be the third item. The next two items are seven sixty-five Center Boulevard. The following item is related to the Senate Bill Nine ordinance that Town Council is entertaining, and our legal counsel, Janet, uh, is it Colson, Janet?
It is, Janet Colson.
Colson, that's what I thought. I had not seen you in, in a while. Janet Colson, our legal counsel, has asked, since there is no urgency, and we want to, she wants to update that report if we could continue it for the next meeting. Is that right? Anything you'd like to add, Janet, for the commission?
No, thank you, that's correct. I think it would just, given the hour and the, um, complexity of that particular item, and the fact that there's a, a lot of things to talk about it, um, it would probably be better to continue it to the next meeting.
Okay, and I wouldn't mind the slightly earlier evening, uh, tonight myself. So if, uh, if others agree, does someone have a motion to continue?
Commissioner Swift, has your hand raised?
Oh, yes, I'm sorry. Cindy, did you have your hand up?
I did have my hand up. Um, I had a lot of questions on that. Not only with the, with the staff report, but with the ordinance and, and the reso, so if we're, um, going to put this off for a month, which I think, um, considering probably folks had a lot of questions with it, then I would like for myself to submit questions um, to staff on it, that staff could then take a look at those questions and be prepared to address them at the next meeting, which might be helpful.
That's a great idea. I actually had the same, uh, comment that I have a number of questions, cu- a couple of them, I, I was able to speak to legal counsel earlier, but Janet, is that something you're comfortable with? Should we send comments to Linda rather than to you directly and have her forward them to you?
Either way, um.
Questions that we might have before the, before it comes back to us. And are you proposing the next meeting in February that it would come to us? And are you proposing the next meeting in February that it would come to us?
Yes, that would be fine.
Okay, there was some talk about potentially changing the date Linda of our planning commission meetings. Have you heard any more about?
Yes, that, that did happen, so you're now going to be meeting the fourth Thursday of each month. The council adopted the resolution making that happen.
The fourth Thursday. Okay, so Janet, that would be our February meeting date and commissioners make note of that. The fourth Thursday now is our standard meeting date, same time, same place.
Yes, that's the 24th of February.
Okay, and the 24th, oh gosh, I hope there's not other stuff going on. Can we have a motion, I think we need a motion to. Postpone this project, to continue.
Yes, to continue the item.
I'll make a motion to continue. Item four to the next regularly scheduled meeting.
I'll second it.
Okay, Linda, roll call.
Alright, Green.
Here, yes.
Jansen.
Hi.
Kelly.
Hi.
Newton.
Hi.
Swift.
Hi.
Chair Fragoso.
Aye. Motion carries, we continue the SB9 ordinance. Until the February council meeting, thank you very much Janet. We'll, we'll send comments, questions along to you and look forward to seeing you next month.
Well, I'm gonna actually stay on because I'm here to help you through the next, if you need it.
Oh good, oh good, it might be nice to have legal counsel. Since our planning director can't join us this evening. Thank you Janet, we will then. Well, let's see which of these items. It's the 765A Center Boulevard. This is a request for a determination from the planning commission whether or not. The proposed restaurant brewery is a formula business. We will discuss that issue first and depending on what the commission determines. Whether it be a formula business or not, item number three will cover. What to do in either case, is that clear to commissioners? Did I say that right Linda?
You did. You did.
Okay, are all the commissioners clear on that? If I, I don't see hands up, so unless Tamela tells me we have hands up. We will move forward with the first staff report.
Okay, I'm ready. Alright, so this project encompasses the remodel of an existing restaurant microbrewery that's been in operation since late, since late 1998. Into a restaurant microbrewery to be operated by a new owner. Hen House Brewery who's also involved with the operation of two breweries. They are not restaurants, the two other locations. And I have a correction to the staff report, the one brewery is located in Petaluma, not Sonoma, and the other one's located in Santa Rosa. So the town code defines a formula business as any business that is required by corporate headquarters or franchise or other arrangement to maintain any of the following. Standardized services, decor, uniforms, architecture, signs or other similar features. The same section further defines a formula restaurant as any restaurant that's required by a corporate headquarters or franchise or other arrangement devoted to the preparation and offering of food and beverage for sale to the public for consumption. Either on or off premises and which is required by contractual or other arrangements to offer any of the following. Standardized menus, ingredients, food preparation, decor, uniforms, architecture or similar standardized features. That were not in business within Fairfax prior to April 1st of 2000. The new owners have provided information about their first proposed combination restaurant microbrewery as attachment to the staff report. Their other locations in Petaluma and Santa Rosa are strictly breweries that do not serve food, but they do have tasting bars to taste beer. They do not require their employees to wear uniforms. This is the only location where they will brew beer and also have a full service menu with employees dedicated to food service and not brewing beer. The business will be a full service restaurant serving meals made from local food products. The Petaluma and Santa Rosa locations are operated in larger warehouse type structures and the commercial site, the pub and brewery will be operated is located in the Fair and Selm Commercial Center, which is a retail and service oriented, you know. Construction and establishment, so the architectures are very different. The commission should discuss the applicant's business proposal and determine by taking a vote if the business constitutes a formula business. Per the definitions of formula business and formula restaurant as set forth in the town code and we have. Given you just a checklist, you can discuss them one at a time. Number one, will the business use menus or offer services that are the same as those used or offered at their other two locations? Two, will the interior design of the restaurant microbrewery share interior design features with the two breweries? Light standards, furniture, wall murals, etc. Will the employees of the restaurant microbrewery be required to wear uniforms or any other standardized clothing that is the same as that worn by employees of the two breweries already in operation? Will the building, the restaurant microbrewery be located in share any architectural features with the architecture of the buildings the two breweries are operating in? Will the business identification signs for the restaurant microbrewery be the same as the other two different signs used by the two operating breweries? Will the restaurant microbrewery by contractual or other arrangements be required to use specific ingredients in their food or beer offerings? Or be required to use any specific food preparation methods or techniques to prepare the food they will serve? If the commission determines that the proposed brewery pub is not a formula business and a formula restaurant. No further action is required by the commission. But if you do go that way, we have prepared a resolution which we will screen share with you and I will read into the record. For, you will take a vote, formalize your vote. If you determine that the business is a formula business, you will move on to agenda item three where you will discuss the. Noticed formula business permit process. So that concludes my report.
Okay. Linda or Janet, we will do the regular. Commissioner questions on, on the report. Is there a public hearing for this, should we open up? Or would that only occur after we take a vote and make this determination?
No, you'll need to, to ask for public comment on every item, so this is an item on your agenda, so public comment is appropriate.
I'm sorry, public comment is appropriate?
Appropriate, yes.
For any item on our agenda, okay, we will use the same procedure then. And if there are commissioner questions to either legal counsel or our. Senior planner, please raise your hand.
Commissioner Newton has her hand raised?
Mimi, are you?
Yeah. So my questions have to do with. Sort of the timing in terms of our answers if, or the question, the answers to these questions. Like, how would it be affected if? In the future, the. Petaluma or. You know, the other facility start serving food, start wearing uniforms, we really only have control over what's happening in Fairfax. And it's really, you know, the conditions would say. You know, you can't start requiring uniforms and.
Well, actually, no, we, the way this is written, it's a snapshot in time. And so it's when the application comes in and they have an existing business somewhere else. And you evaluate it. For example, I think Iron Springs had their establishment in Fairfax and then after that was already opened.
That's right.
Another one, which didn't make them a formula business from Fairfax because it came subsequent. So this is the snapshot in time, you're looking at what's, what's before you right now with that application. They have two existing establishments. Does this in. Relation to our code under the definitions of formula business, does this make them a formula business right now?
Okay, and do we have to answer like, yes to any one of these for it to be a formula business?
Yeah, that's, that's part of, this is the test, these are things that make it a formula business, any of these.
But could you? I'm sorry, on that same question. Do we have to go through, I thought we were going to vote and say, yes, this is, no, it isn't a formula business. So is legal counsel saying we should go through each number and say yea or nay? And then vote on whether it's a formula business or not?
These are the factors, okay?
Must they all be present? Is there only one?
Well, let's look at the way the code is written, I believe so, let's see. Let's see, business per the definitions of formula business set forth in the town code. And the factors that make it a formula business are any of these things. One through six.
Any, it does say any of these things, okay? Alright, other, other questions about what we're doing from commissioners to staff or legal counsel?
Commissioner Jansen.
There we go, so. From one to six, four of them are easy to answer, but two and five. Are difficult because we don't know what the interior will look like, because I don't see a design incorporated. And the signage, there is a suggestion, we could have an opinion about the suggestion, but it is. Disclaimed that it's not the final, so how can we answer those in this point in time?
I think, I think you would ask the applicants, you know, are you planning to? Have any hen house logos on the walls or do you have? Are you matching furniture in the other locations with the furniture in this establishment? Right?
Okay, so there, yeah, okay, thank you.
They should be present.
Yeah, okay, good.
And Commissioner Green has his hand raised?
Yeah, I totally agree with Linda Neal that. We, I have a ton of questions for the applicant and, and it goes partly to my background as a trademark attorney and business attorney for 40 years and. Applicant are gonna get grilled when you come up. So, but let me ask a question about the process for also is, and that is. If, so there are in section 17040. 220, there's conditional use for restaurants. And then there's a list basically of. A through F. Which are similar to the questions, but not exactly the same, so one of those. Is the proposed formula business will promote diversity and variety, etc. And I think those are the questions that we really need to be addressing there, because the ones I think in my opinion in the. Report aren't exactly the same as the. Questions in the ordinance.
But those are the ones that you will consider if you decide it's a formula business, are you looking at the findings for approval of a formula business, correct?
Right.
Yeah, so that, that's, that's the next, that's the next item, if you determine.
I know, I know, but based on, so that language. Can, can any of those aspects become conditions in the. In the permit? For example, can we say that we could, we, one of the conditions is that, that the proposed business. Will continue to promote diversity, that it will not have. Uniforms like the ones worn in the breweries. Can, can we make those conditions, and I guess that's a question for Janet and Linda?
I'm happy to, I'm happy to answer that, so this is envisioned, it's, this is something new for the commission. Because before we had staff make a determination and bring to you. An application for a permit if they determined that it was a formula business. And if they determined it wasn't a formula business, you never saw it. And so I thought it would, we've had some issues, and so I thought it would be better if we had the commission actually take a look at the entry. Entry level question, the first question, is this a formula business as defined by the Fairfax code? And then you look at those factors to determine, should they even be here at all, is this a formula business, is it not? If it's not, inquiry stops, you're done, that's it. If it is, then you move on to the next step, which Linda has put on as a separate item, which is the. Traditional thing that you see, which is a. A request for a formula business permit. So just because something is a formula business doesn't mean Fairfax won't allow it. They will allow it if they meet the conditions present for a formula business permit. And you can put conditions on that permit. You know, to maintain the fact that it's. It is a formula business, but it's okay pursuant to the code because it meets the requirements to get a formula business permit. Does that help at all?
Yes, it does.
Yes, sure, so first is this initial determination.
Uh-oh, you just went.
We lost, you went muted, well, he can't hear me say.
And there's no, there's no permit required then or the discussion about it if it isn't a formula business.
Correct, correct.
We're gonna have to hear from the applicant.
And that, can I just draw your attention to one other thing which I didn't elaborate on in the staff report, but the applicant has submitted photographs of the interior of his other locations, right? And they're breweries, they have big brewing vats, they have tasting bars. So even though the location in Fairfax does have a bar, it's going to have other larger tables for people to sit at, right? With hanging lamps over the places where people eat, so. I don't see that the furniture and things, you know, and the decor is gonna be similar, but that's something you can ask.
Before we get into those details, can we just finish any clarifying questions that commissioners have? To Linda or Janet about what we're doing with this item? And then I'd like to go through and have preliminary impressions from us. Does, does it seem like it is, does it seem like it isn't, and then we can dive into some of the more detail that Linda is offering. How does that sound? Who would like to go next? I can if nobody else is ready. Okay, I will. I, I get it, we need to just determine, is it a formula business? And these five questions will help us to answer it, but. You know, there's also other things that. Commissioner Green was alluding to, for instance. They are trying to retain the Iron Springs employees. I think that's a wonderful thing, how many businesses come in and retain employees when they, when they. Take over a business and the other thing is that. I, I haven't. I, I may or may not have decided, is this a formula business, but I find it somewhat similar to the Good Earth. There are now two Good Earths, do we really consider the Good Earth a formula business? Is this, is this more like? Jack in the box, or is this more like the Good Earth? To me, a formula business is Jack in the Box, Chevron, Wells Fargo. A corporation. Good Earth might have a form of corporation, but I don't think of them in the same way, Linda, is Good Earth a formula business?
When they opened in Fairfax, they were the only location, so when they opened, that snapshot as Janet says, they were not a formula business.
Would they be considered that? Do you think Mill Valley considered them a formula business when they opened up there?
I don't know if Mill Valley has a formula business ordinance, there are a lot of communities that don't have that, this type of ordinance.
Okay, so anyway, that, that's my sense of, that's kind of how I'm going to go about looking at it and. And I I can leave it at that and see if there's other comments or questions from commissioners.
I do not see any hands.
Okay, so what do you guys want to do, just take a vote?
Would you like to hear from the public?
We have to hear from the public.
Yeah, the applicant and the public, okay?
Oh, okay. Sorry, yes, you're right, the applicant first. Is our applicant here?
Yes, I see him.
Sure am.
Welcome. Thank you for joining us. Please tell us about your restaurant brewery.
Would so, would, I'd be remiss to not start with thanking Linda and Janet for their guidance in kind of getting through the permitting process and like guiding us towards this, because not only do I believe we are not a formula business and gonna be a good contribution to the Fairfax community, we don't want to be a formula business. So if there's stuff you need to see that we're not, we're about doing that. My business partner Shane is is on the call as well. The the two of us and one other business partner started the company about ten years ago. We spent about two years doing it nights and weekends, and then we only went full time in twenty fourteen. And we only got our first permanent location of our own in twenty sixteen. So we've been growing and hiring people over the years. Being, being a company that actually represents the community is part of our mission. The company mission is to create meaningful employment that enhances beer quality for the end consumer and creates wealth for our community. That last part, we phrased it very specifically as create wealth for our community, because it's not just about being profitable. It's about being a business that makes where it is a better place to live. You know, we're we're very, very involved in nonprofits in the Sonoma County area where our two tasting rooms are right now. You know, we we try and be involved in supporting nonprofits financially, but also involved in supporting them actively. You know, we we try and go out and we try to be good volunteers. We try and support local sports teams, you know? Being, being a company that actually gives you, excuse me, cares about our community and wants to be a a contributor to a place that's cool to live is super, super important to us. So, you know, to that extent, we're people who believe in the the formula business ordinance, and we certainly wouldn't want to run amok of it. You know? There were, there were some specific comments about the design of this location. For us, we've always, we've always not tried to do a restaurant, right? This is our, this is our first attempt at a restaurant. And the reason we wanted to stay away from a restaurant is we knew we wanted to take it as seriously as we take our beer. Like I said, in the mission, you know, like enhance beer quality for the end consumer is part of our mission, and we want to take that level of commitment to quality and take that over into a kitchen. We're really, really lucky that Alex Clarkowski, the chef at Iron Springs, is staying on, as well as the vast majority of the Iron Springs Kitchen. They've all agreed to stay on with us. We're bringing them onto the team, and we really want to make sure that we're we're showing through with them the quality that we believe in. I've seen some some draft menus from Alex. If any of y'all have been lucky enough to meet him, he's a delightful human being and an incredibly talented chef, and I really, really excited about kind of keeping him in Fairfax, keeping him cooking there. So we want to back that up with making the the whole experience of our first restaurant super, super cool. At our other tasting rooms, we we really focus on what we call flight. You know, we do tastings of six beers at a time. None of the the folks who work in our tasting rooms are bartenders, we don't like that term, we're not a bar. We don't, we don't do that, we're tasting rooms, we focus on flights, so the people who work behind the bar are flight attendants. In Fairfax, we're not trying to do that tasting room experience, we're really trying to do a restaurant experience, and so we it's our first time ever working with a interior designer. They're super, super talented. The interior designer we're working with is one of Shane's best friends from from growing up. So we're really kind of excited to be able to keep that money that we're spending on making this place look cool and look unique. Kind of within our community, right? And so, you know, the other two tasting rooms, which we very much built by hand by ourselves are gonna look dramatically different than what Joel is doing for us in Fairfax, right? It's really gonna be about kind of like focusing in on that idea of a community gathering place, you know, like the the table as the place where the community gathers to like share food, share drinks, share good times. And I think that if you look at the the drawings that we've, we shared. I can, I can make sure that those get to the commission, because I heard somebody say they hadn't seen the the drawings of the interior. It's very, very different than what our other locations are gonna look like, you know? I grew up in brew pubs in San Francisco. My first four brewing jobs were in brew pubs in San Francisco. And I don't, I don't want to cookie cutter something into your town. You know, I want to like come in and like do something that's actually reflective of the people who work there, the people who live there and who are gonna be the people supporting this place. You know, that that idea of a brew pub as kind of a unique, interesting thing means so much to me that I would hate for anybody to think we wanted to just come in and be like, you know? You know, welcome to Arby's, here's your uniform. That's so not who we are or what we want to do. We we really look at having this, this smaller brewery, you know, this micro brewery at the spot as an opportunity to do new and interesting beers that aren't available anywhere else, right? We look at it as an opportunity to do beer and food pairings that we're not able to do anywhere else, right? We really look at it as a unique opportunity for us, not a cookie cutter opportunity that that, that's uninteresting to us, that's not. That's not fun or cool, no one wants that, you don't want that. So what we would really like to do is make sure that what we're doing at the West County Pub, which is the name we're we're working with for the location right now, is something that is reflective of, you know, the the delicious stuff that comes out of the the West County. Something that is reflective of the community of Fairfax and something that is fun and unique and not just, you know? Cookie cutter. I think, I think that addresses kind of the the concerns I've heard so far, but I'm here and happy to answer questions for the rest of the evening. So again, big thanks to Linda and Janet for kind of making clear the the concerns around the ordinance to us and working with us on getting the application together, and I look forward to questions from the rest of the commission.
That that's a good summary, thank you very much, and I'm sure as you heard, the commissioners will have questions for you. And Tamela will, please give us the order they can start out in.
Looks like Commissioner Green is first out of the gate with a question.
Thank you, yeah, a few questions, I'm I'm looking at you know, first of all, I heard your enthusiasm, and that sounded great, you know, and that's, that's the kind of thing. That building, you know, that that old pub that that there has has kind of had that feeling in a way. It's also been a real family oriented place. But one of my questions goes to the pictures of your current hen house places that you put in the in the exhibits. And then below that, you also put examples of the signage that you're thinking of doing at the West Country Pub, West County Pub. And I I couldn't help but thinking there's a lot of similarity there. So the part of the formula restaurant that I'm having a little trouble with that says required by contractual or other arrangement, remember, or other arrangement could be oral, could be your interior decorator suggesting, that's another arrangement. The following standard menus, ingredients, food preparation, decor, uniforms, or similar standard features, and so the ordinance was left very large. And, you know, when it says similar standardized features, so the one I wanted to ask you. Are you planning to serve hen house beers and other beers at the West County Pub?
Okay, am I still on?
Yes, you are.
So we don't really have a a significant intention to serve other people's beers there. We do, we we distribute and deliver beers for a couple of other breweries that we're really, really fond of. And so there there is a possibility of doing that, but the real, the real hope here is, you know, like our brewery in Santa Rosa is a is a thirty barrel brew house, and we have mostly sixty barrel fermentation tanks, right? So it's sixty barrels is, you know, about eighteen hundred gallons at a time, right? Whereas the the brewery at this location is three hundred gallons. So there's really a lot of opportunity to do variety and experimentation and new stuff at this location that we're just not able to do on the scale that we operate on in Santa Rosa. So the real hope here, Alex Whitehurst, who's one of our brewers from Santa Rosa, we offered him the job here, is really the the gonna be the creative kind of inspiration behind this, and we really want to, we we've given him a lot of autonomy, it was the 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 discussion with him was funny, because he was like, you just want me to do what I want to do? We were like, yes. The 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 whole goal here would be like, we've got a really cool opportunity to do something different than what we do other places because of the brewery system here. You know, and Mike and Ann, when they initially approached us about this, when they were looking for a way to transition out of the location. I think they 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 appreciated what they kind of had here and how it would be a cool thing for us. And so we really want to make sure that we're focusing at this location on the beer made at this location, because it's such a cool, unique opportunity for us.
Okay, can I ask, are you gonna be serving like wine or any other type of liquor?
No liquor, we do want to have wine available. So we we've got a lot of family who are celiac, and so making sure that gluten free options are available, both in the the beverages and in the food is super, super important to us. Just as an inclusivity thing. So we we have a couple of employees who've worked at other local wineries. And then in Petaluma, we've got a neighbor Cruz Winery, who we've kind of talked about working together to collaborate on like a house wine for us. So we we would want to have wine there, most particularly as a gluten free option for folks who want to come in.
Okay, fair enough, let me, let me explain, one one place I'm coming from here is future. You know, one, one thing we do on the planning commission is we're looking maybe fifteen, twenty, thirty years or more in the future and trying to make things work, so we we have to, we have to watch out for precedent. So I have another question for you. I've noticed in the pictures of your other facilities, you use this same logo apparently that you're using, planning to use in Fairfax, this hen, by the way, have you ever heard of Old Speckled Hen?
I have, in fact, I have funny stories about them that I won't.
But the the logo, are you planning to use the same hen style logo? And the word hen house brewing company on like mats and carpets in the Fairfax facility? Like you use them at the at the other breweries?
So yeah, we are intending on using the term hen house brewing, you know, like one of the reasons we were interested when Mike and Ann approached us about this was that Fairfax has always been super, super supportive of hen house. And we we want to make sure that we're, you know, the supporting the people who support us. We do totally understand the desire for that to not just be a thing, so we we have worked on logos that are unique to this location, and this location will have entirely unique logos and branding that represents what's going on in Fairfax as opposed to being generic to our other locations. You know, the in Petaluma, we do that. There's the Palace of Barrels branding that we have. We, there's a little bit of bleed over between the two locations, but we're we've already kind of started down that path, so it's important to us that we kind of continue building on that. And like particularly given that the the community in Fairfax really wants to see investment in the uniqueness of this location, we're more than happy to continue what we've been doing to continue that trend towards locations that have a a really, really separate identity and concept. And, you know, that's an exciting and fun thing for us.
Okay, okay, thank you for answering those questions, appreciate it.
Commissioner Janson has his hand up.
Thank you. Yeah, I had a similar line of questions for you as Commissioner Green. But then there's one more thing that I'd like to drill down, so I understand how different this new facility is and what you're gonna try to do, which is different from what we've done some somewhere else in Petaluma or in Santa Rosa. But it seems to me that the the hen house beer is really the branding that is important for your business. And I see that in your color palette, I see it in the fonts. So my, what I think is you are going to do something different, but at the same time you want to brand the hen house famous beer. Is that correct?
I mean, I don't want to like pretend we don't own it, if that's the question.
No, no, but I mean, that that that's the work of the business, right? You make these beautiful beers, and they are known for what they are. And so I see that come back to the branding of what you're gonna do needs to carry that. Even though what you do, even the restaurant is actually really a new, new sport for you.
Well, but but not just the restaurant, but the beer itself. Like, I would, I would be remiss if I did not tell you about how talented Alex Whitehurst, who's who's gonna be brewing at this location is. Like, we we really, you know, like hen house beer has has a very distinctive thing that we that we do, you know? I don't want to, I don't want to bog down the planning commission with with too much beer terminology, but like, the way that we do hop forward beer is really like a interesting and different approach to what people think of as contemporary happy beer, right? Like, there's, you you may have heard like, you know, New England IPA or West Coast IPA, and what we do is really very, very different. We don't take a lot of those conventions, and we we really try and focus in on beer that has a lot of like tropical fruit flavors, which people think of as east coast beer, but is kind of dry and sessionable the way the west coast beer is. So we have this very, very specific thing that is the hen house thing, and we've really tasked Alex with like, hey, we want to expand beyond that, right? So I would, I would hate for people to come to the West County Pub expecting to get that kind of like hen house IPA only experience. Because we're really, what we want to showcase is like Alex has done a lot of the the beers that we have, the the small number of beers that we have done, that are kind of outside of our normal comfort, so. So like, you know, like, again, I don't want to like tell you like, no, we don't want to have any association with hen house, like I own the company, like obviously, we we're gonna have some of that beer there, but like what we really want to do with this location is give Alex just a ton of running room to make classic styles, like one of the, when we hired him, one of the things that was really exciting is he was, he was really, really passionate about Kentucky Comet, which is a beer style you've never heard of. But it's a thing that's really important to him. And that's the kind of passion that we saw in him that was the reason that we wanted him brewing there, and like those kinds of beers that we want to have available, so like I don't want to say it's like gonna be experimental, like we're gonna be like, you know, like, oh, and this one just has lots of vanilla in it. Alex is absolutely somebody who's gonna be looking at those historical traditions of brewing. uh, and looking for inspiration there and looking for ways that we can do, you know, like traditional Schwartz beer, traditional, uh, Groitski, traditional Kentucky Comet, um, and bring those to our customers and give them that kind of experimental thing as well as, uh, you know, we did a, um, a Concha Kolsch with, um, uh, If Given A Chance, which is a nonprofit out in Napa, that's amazing. They, um, uh, help put disadvantaged kids, um, through high school and into college. Um, they're, they're amazing. We did a Concha flavored Kolsch with them. So he's, he's very confectionery as well. If you ever get the chance to have him bake you cookies, I recommend it. Um, so like, I don't want to say like, you know, no, we're not gonna like advertise that Hen House makes good beer and you should come here because it make a beer. But we do actually really want to focus the West County Pub on the fact that there's food, that there's these unique, interesting beers that are being made there. Um, you know, like, that's a special experience for people. If it was just like, hey, here's our beer plus food, that wouldn't be something I would be particularly passionate about. But the fact that like, uh, Alex is really kind of like taking that step up. Um, he's, he's really leaning into the creative element of it. That's what makes me excited about it. And Alex Clarkowski, the chef, um, has really like matched him on that creativity. And like, just the, the spark between those two dudes, um, uh, leads me to believe that like, when you go there and you drink the beer and you eat the food, you won't be confused about where you are.
Right, understood, thank you.
Any other questions for the applicant? If there aren't any, uh.
Commissioner Green, did you have another question?
Yes, yes, I, I'm not really a question, it's sort of a comment. Uh, I'd have a lot less trouble with some of this if, if, um, the, if the hen logo that isn't, that is being used in other locations outside and in apparently, um, weren't on this business and, um, but maybe is inside that with your beers. Um, and if this signage was West Country Pub Fairfax, California, featuring Hen House Brewing Company, something like that. I'd have a little less problem with the, with the branding, you know? And it's, again, this isn't, this isn't against you. It's, it's, it's you versus the future. We have to be careful what precedent we set. This isn't you, I love your attitude, I love your beers. It's not the point. The point is, we must be very careful with precedent we set here, okay? Because we don't want Chevron back, for example, with an excuse that gee, we let someone else do it.
Could, could we, could we not get into Chevron?
Thank you.
I'm sorry, but, uh, and also you're, 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 you're somewhat main, you're, you're forgetting that we also need to discuss this as a formula business. Is it or is it? So there's that other option or discussion, uh, anyway.
Let's, let's get into that.
Well, let's finish, are there other commissioner comments, uh, questions for the applicant? And if not, is there anyone in the public who would like to comment? And so, uh, we could close the public comment and then come back and have a discussion amongst the commission members and start to move towards a vote on this item.
This might be a great time to remind the public that the raise hand function is at the bottom center of your Zoom screen. And now would be the time to press it if you would like to comment on this.
Perfect, thank you, Tamela, people can also call in.
And I do not see any hands.
Cindy, did you have a comment? I saw your face come up on my screen. Okay, I'm just on a, on a, on a iPhone. And so sometimes different people's, uh, images come up for me, only one at a time. Okay, if there are no more commissioner questions of the applicant, and apparently no public comment from the audience.
We did actually just have somebody raise their hand as he started speaking.
Wonderful.
Dee Lee?
Please do.
Thank you, Tamela, thank you, uh, commissioners. Um, I, I want to, uh, agree with Commissioner Green that we have to be really careful here about setting a precedent. And, um, of course, want to be friendly in our Fairfax way, but, uh, we have to be really careful about, um, deciding what constitutes, uh, a, a formula business. So, so thank you for taking great care in doing so, that's all I have to say.
Thank you, thank you for your comments. And any, anyone out there, uh, want to raise your hand and make a comment on this? If not, we would then close the public hearing, Tamela, and just bring it back to the commission for, uh, are there any brief comments or questions from the commission to staff or legal counsel before we start to, uh, how, how would you like to do this? Would you each like to just comment? Would you like to each go down the list and say, yes, I think this, this number, this number, this number apply? Uh, Commissioner Kelly, do you have a suggestion how you'd like to proceed?
Yeah, I'd like to just, um, I guess voice an observation. I, I can't help but think of, as the applicant's speaking of a company, uh, in another town in, in Portland, uh, that's very, uh, very well known. They have a number of establishments. There are no, no doubt in my mind that they're a, a, uh, formula business. Every building that you walk into is absolutely different. It appears different and it's highlighted and it's on purpose. What, you know, they, they take on older buildings and some of them are hotels, some of them are old schools. And they purposely make the, the nature of those establishments take on the character that you're in that day. Uh, but I can't help but think that it's that brand identity that makes them the formula business. It's not the, the kind of the appearance of that particular space or the menu in that particular space. It's the brand identity, um, and it somehow rings true here. And it's just something for us to consider.
Mm-hmm, good observation.
Commissioner Jansen was next, I believe, sorry, I just accidentally low, lowering your hand, sir, while trying to call on you.
That's how you did it, I was wondering. Um, thank you.
I thought.
Yes, I, I think that is exactly the point. It, you know, in, in a way it's iffy, but the point is the branding. Um, and, um, there is no, I mean, that is the core of their business, that's what they have to do. I fully understand it and they are local and so there's not a problem. So I think it is not a problem because, um, um, all is not lost because the conditional use, which we're gonna discuss next, next, if we go that way, uh, uh, would not make a precaution to anything. But so to be careful and to make sure we don't set the wrong precedent, you have to be cognizant of that this is a branded product. And that's, that's, I think, the most important.
We have a hand from the town attorney, Janet Coulson, and then Commissioner Swift and Green.
I just want to point out that we, um, whatever the words formula business mean to you personally, we're constrained by what's in our code. So we have to stick to how formula business is defined in our code. So that's why we listed out all those factors that are listed because, you know, formula business could mean something to everybody and it could be different. And that's why there's a definition and we all need to be on the same page and stay with that definition.
And then, uh, Commissioner Green?
Um, Janet Coulson is absolutely right and we need to look at one through six. So, uh, if, if you don't mind, let me look at one for a second. Will the business use menus or offer services that are the same as those used or offered at their other two locations? And the answer to that is yes, because in the menu, they're going to have the same beers, the same brand beers and similar services, serving beers as the other two locations. So, question one. Um, and I think we need to go through one through six. And I'm not sure if you want to, you know, have me do this myself right now or if we each want to do that or if we want to take a poll on each one, but I could just run through them.
Run through them, go ahead.
Okay, um, will the interior design of the, you know, we don't know. This is part of the problem with this application, actually haven't seen, um, you know, as we see with many, many applications, even an artist's rendering of the Fairfax interior. So we don't, we don't have an answer, um, for that question. But it looks like it will actually share some of the design features with the two breweries, um, in, in mats that have the logo and in elements, uh, that have the logo, the hen logo. Three, will employees of the restaurant brewery be required to wear uniforms, et cetera? No, apparently not. And it's thankful that they, that the applicant would like to hire our local, uh, people who do have the experience. So that's, that's a thankful thing. Um, so, you know, there's, there's a good factor. Number four, will the building, uh, be located and share architectural features? Of course it will, they're not gonna change the architecture. Um, but they're not gonna share it with the other breweries. They're, they're all completely different. The architecture will remain as it is in Fairfax and that's, that's fine. So that, that question's okay. Five, will the business identification signs, there's the signs again, um, be the same as either of the two signs? And this is where I really had a problem, uh, looking at the pictures of the other two businesses, um, frankly. Uh, six, will the restaurant microbrewery, uh, by contractual or other arrangements be required to use specific ingredients for the food or beer? That's a hard one after the discussion, uh, from the applicant that, that says they want to set their brewer free here in Fairfax. So maybe not, maybe that question, uh, is, but you're gonna, I would bet that the answer is yes, you're going to be bringing brews that you guys make Hen House, uh, from other of your breweries for a while because it takes a while to get beer brewed, uh, you can't just serve it tomorrow. So there's a mixed response to these questions from me and I guess that's, I ran through them, so I'm done, thank you.
Commissioner Swift has her hand raised.
Okay, so I don't see this application as a formula business, a formula restaurant when you look at our code. Um, this is the first restaurant for this applicant. There's no standardized menus, ingredients, food prep, decor, no uniforms or architecture is not the same as any other location or similar standardized features. So I don't view this as a formula restaurant under our code.
Okay, that was clear and concise, I appreciate that, who's next? Who would like to go next?
I'll take a stab at it.
Go for it, Mimi.
Uh, will they use menus and services that's the same, that are the same as the other two locations? Uh, you know, I think we did hear from the, uh, Mr. Hall that the, um, the image of the rooster would be present, but we've got a different name. So, you know, it's gonna be different in terms of the menu. Uh, but the, you know, the services to the extent we're serving beer and you might not have the, the flight, uh, but rather, you know, a pitcher of beer and you've got, uh, you know, the old crew from, um, Iron Springs is, you know, gonna stick around and stay there, but, you know, that one's hard. Um, I think the answer is probably yes, a little bit for the services. Uh, will the interior share design features of the other two locations? I take it that they won't. Will there be uniforms? I take it no. Uh, architectural features, doesn't sound like it. Uh, signage, of course, you could work around that. And, uh, specific ingredients being used for the food or the beer. Um, it sounds again like a no on that one, so those are my thoughts.
Thank you, Mimi, is, um, am I the one left?
Commissioner Jansen has his.
Okay, thank you.
Well, I guess we're going, are out of table for the six questions, so again, I'll do mine.
Right ahead.
Um, the services, um, in the sense that they're serving beer, yes, but I would, that's an iffy one. So you could go both ways, I'm happy to say no. The interior, I look at the interior to other offices. I'm quite sure it's gonna be black with rot, with hot red. And I'm quite sure it has the Hen House name in there because that's what we just heard. So that's a yes, that's part of the business plan. Three, um, no, we know that. Four, no, of course, it's existing. Five, that's again, it's that sign. Um, yeah, it's a variation, but, um, she put a smiley face on a McDonald's and it's still McDonald's. So that is where the problem is. And then six, um, contractual arrangement, that's difficult, but based on what we heard, my answer would probably be no. So I, I'm left with two yeses. And as I said before, it's a bit iffy, but I want to be conservative because I don't want to set a precedent. And it's not gonna be a problem anyway, so that's my opinion.
Okay, did, um, did everyone, uh, did all the other commissioners run through your numbers? Commissioner Kelly, did you do the numbers? I believe you did, okay, so then it's my turn.
I, I, I did not actually run through them. I guess if we're all gonna do it, I'll, I'll run through them quickly.
Go ahead.
Okay, so will the buil- business use menus or offer services that are the same as those used? The services and menus, sure, it has a restaurant, but I believe that the primary focus is, it, it's a brew pub, right? It's, it's a beer place, so I have to say yes, um, to that. Um, will the interior design of the restaurant, microbrewery share interior design features? Uh, it sounds like no, the im- the images of the two places that we've seen as precedent, they look quite different, so that sounds great. Uh, will the employees of the restaurant, microbrewery be required to wear uniforms? Uh, we've heard that they will not. Will the building and restaurant be located in, in sharing the architectural features with the architecture of the other two breweries? Uh, obviously it won't. Will the business identification signs of the restaurant be same as the other two? I think that the branding examples that we've seen, uh, I, I would characterize as being quite similar. Uh, that just the colors themselves with the hen, uh, I think that that would be a yes. And then, uh, contractual or other arrangements be required for, uh, ingredients? I think the, that the, the beer, um, recipes are, are likely gonna be the same. I, we heard that, uh, they will be special here because of the, uh, quantities. And, you know, maybe there's something we could write in that that would, uh, someday, some way we could mandate that they would not create the same beer recipes, but that seems like it's not really in our purview. So I would have to say again, that's a, maybe yes.
Okay, thank you, um. I will do the numbers as well, but, uh, uh, Janet, I was looking for the sentence that says, if the, if any one of these applies, then it's a formula business, did I get that right? Any one of the six?
Yes, so.
Makes it a formula business, yes. So since I agree with the commissioners, uh, all the other commissioners, basically, it's not yelling out screaming formula business, they're not going to be wearing the uniforms, but it is a brewery, they will have the, the label, the Hen House. It, it, I think. It, it, I think if, uh, one or two of these apply, and all of the commissioners said at least one or two of these apply, then that makes it a formula business, and so then I think, uh, some of us sounded like, oh, that's a problem if you're a formula business, we don't wanna set this precedent. But yet, we, we can allow a formula business. If we decide this in fact, you know, is borderline, it looks like a formula business, but if we could make the findings under the formula business, which I believe we could make, we were all talking about how it promotes diversity and variety, and it assures a balance, it complements the rest of our businesses.
Let's make sure to keep these two things separate. So why don't we do this? Why don't we actually make a determination? And then that will tell us whether we go to the next item, which is, um, review, consideration of.
Okay, then, 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 uh, uh, my comment would be, it seems like this is a formula business, let's review it as such.
Okay. Okay, do we have, do you wanna run through, how do you wanna do it? Do you wanna run through the commissioners and have everybody say yes or no?
Everyone say yes or no. We already know that at least one or two of these, and as you say, if one or two applies, it's a formula business. So commissioners, do you agree it's a formula business?
Um, if I may, just make another comment here. Um, not everyone, not every commissioner felt that one of these items applied. So.
Oh, no, okay.
So let me just go over, and it may not change anybody's view, but let me go over again, um, my thinking on this. When you look at the formula restaurant, standardized menus, no. They don't have any other restaurant, there won't be a standardized menu. And when I think of a formula restaurant, I'm thinking of something more like a restaurant that has the same exact menu at every one of its locations. The ingredients are gonna be different, because the menu's not gonna be the same as they have anywhere else. Um, I would even venture, and I don't necessarily break the beer out from the food, but the ingredients for the beers are gonna be different. Their food prep therefore is gonna be different. The decor is gonna be different than their breweries that they have, that are large quantity breweries, um, with no restaurant, um, no uniforms. The architecture is different than what I see in the pictures, um, for their other locations. And I don't see any other standardized feature, um, that applies here. So I just wanted to go over my thinking on this from a formula.
But what about Hen House logo?
Nothing about.
There's nothing here that, that, that talks about a logo. There's nothing that has been identified, um, as a potential signage for this. So, you know, again, I don't see this as meeting any of the, the items in the discussion of, uh,
Oh, okay.
Formula restaurant.
Okay, uh, Mimi? Are you the?
Well, I think others have had their hands up longer than me. Uh, I think Robert and, uh, Phil, and then I'll go after them, if that's okay.
Sure.
Um, it, it's a bit poorly written, but at the very end of these, it says, it states, um, or similar standard features that was not in, uh, that was not in business within the town of Fairfax prior. So those similar standard features references to the same as what it says on the formula business. And that's where signs are mentioned. As I said, it's not, it's a bit fuzzy, because it is in one and not in the other. Um, but based on the staff report, because it is in there, I understood that interpretation to be correct, but maybe it's not, and, um, I think maybe that's a question for Janet Colson.
So this is a unique, um, application, because we're both, we're looking at both formula business, the definition of formula business, and the definition of formula restaurant, because they're bo- it's both.
Okay, so then the signs are included.
Yeah.
Right, yeah, that was my interpretation too, thank you.
Commissioner Green?
Um, yeah, I, I agree with, uh, Commissioner Janson. The, the signage is the, kind of the main thing that does it for me. Um, but, you know, the, the, as, as has been mentioned, even if it's a formula business by definition under our ordinance, because we're cautious, I think, looking at the next step, there won't be much of a problem. So, uh, you know, that, that's where I'm at, yes, it's a formula business, but, uh, we think, you know, based on debate, public hearing, we think, we think it won't be a problem.
You're, you're moving into another item. I was cautioned by legal counsel not to get into what are we doing with the other item? Let's just determine now, is this or is this not a formula business?
So do you want yeses or no's? Yes.
Okay.
Could, someone could make a motion, is, make a motion this is a formula business, and then I can call roll and you can vote yea or nay. Does that work?
All right, Commissioner Green, since you last determined it was a formula business, will you so move?
Um, I make a motion that we determine that this project, um, the Hen House, um, six, seven sixty-five A, Center Boulevard, uh, applicant, um, is, is a formula business. Application twenty-two dash zero one is a formula business, and I guess the only thing we can do is vote yea or nay on that.
Do we have a second?
We have a motion, is there a second?
I'll second.
Uh, motion, motion, Commissioner Green, second by Janson. Please call the roll. Is this a formula business, is the question?
The, the motion is that it is a formula.
That it is a formula business, yes.
Green?
Yes.
Janson?
Hi.
Kelly?
Yes.
Newton?
Hi.
Swift?
No.
Fregoso?
Yes.
Okay. So you've made the determination that it is a formula business, so we'll move on to number three, item, agenda item three. Shall I give the staff report?
Please do.
Okay. Oops, I lost my staff report.
Good thing we only had a couple of reports this time. Agenda item number three.
Okay. So as we said before in the last staff report, uh, this project is remodel of an existing restaurant brew pub that's been in operation since nineteen ninety-eight, keeping the same floor plan, but refreshing the space to represent the new bu- business identity. The remodel of the approximately four thousand and ninety-six square foot space will not change the locations of the restaurant service, kitchen, or dining areas, nor will it relocate or expand the areas currently used for brewing purposes. Um, the applicants are proposing to use a different name for the business, it's going to be West Country Pub. So during agenda item two, you determine that the brewery, um, will be a formula business. So in order to approve a formula business, you have to be able to make the find, following findings. The proposed formula business or restaurant will promote diversity and variety to assure a balanced mix of commercial uses available to serve both resident and visitor populations. The proposed formula business or restaurant, together with its design and improvements, will be consistent with the unique and historic village-like character of the town, and will preserve the unique visual appearance and shopping and dining experience of the town for the residents and visitors. The proposed formula business or restaurant will provide services or products which complement existing businesses in the zoning district in which it is proposed to operate, considering the existence of and proximity to the same or similar businesses within that zone, and will not have significant adverse financial impact to same or similar businesses within that zone. D, if located in the town center planning area, the proposed formula business or restaurant will be consistent with the pedestrian orientation of the town center planning area. E, the proposed formula business or restaurant will help residents avoid the need to drive out of town for their shopping needs. And F, the formula, the proposed formula business or restaurant will be consistent with all the applicable general plan, goals, objectives, policies, and programs. So when you discuss, when you discuss your findings, you should take into considering the following. The applicants are planning to take over an existing successful brew pub, restaurant, and microbrewery that ha- has had two prior owners. The location has been an anchor element for the Fair Anselm Shopping Center, serving foods using local products and producing unique beers brewed onsite for twenty-three years. The new owners plan to continue to serve foods and beers created onsite using local prod- products and produce. The business is operated without negatively impacting surrounding businesses, providing a welcoming venue for Fairfax residents and visitors to town, and providing a place for them to gather, eat, and celebrate for many years. Two, the space is not being expanded or remodeled. Any exterior changes will be minor and will not change the existing architecture of the structure. Three, the business is the only microbrewery in Fairfax. Or the outdoor eating space is welcoming and pedestrian-friendly for neighboring residents as well as visitors to town. The area is not close enough to the neighboring residential zones to create noise issues, odor, or parking issues. And after conducting the public hearing, you should continue discussing the project, make findings for the action the majority of the commissioners are considering taking, and adjourn for a short break while staff finalizes a resolution supporting the commission's chosen action. That would conclude my report.
If I may, if I may, add something to that. Um, Linda, I think we also need to add in the regular use permit conditions.
Okay.
Oh, thirty-two, oh, six, oh.
So, okay. So let me ask about that. So they're already operating under a con- conditional use permit, does that change anything?
That's right, that's right, you're right, I'm sorry.
Yeah, they, they already have a conditional use permit.
Conditional use permit, okay, so we don't have to worry about those findings, thank you. Okay, you're very much, you're right, I forgot about that. I know, it's easy to forget.
Okay, good. So for the commission, we've already determined it's a formula business. Are there any questions commissioners have of staff or legal counsel? Before we open the public hearing on this item, after which, we will come back for a full discussion with the commission.
Commissioner Swift has her hand raised.
Okay, Cindy?
So Linda, how do we address, um, live music inside?
They already have a use, they already have a li- a live music use permit, and they're bound by the conditions of that live music use permit.
And is it inside only?
Restricted to inside only, and I have heard that, um, Iron Springs did have some outdoor music in their temporary use permit area, but that was not authorized by the town, and I find no evidence that the temporary use permit included a provision for that. And the temporary use permits are due to sunset. The council has talked about maybe making them permanent, but, but I don't believe it's gonna include outdoor mu- if they wanna have outdoor music, they're gonna have to come back and, um, modify their.
We've also seen outdoor music in some of the other parklets.
Yes.
Uh, on, on, on the strip, yeah. Okay, Cindy, I'm sorry, go ahead.
So going back to the music, the conditional use permit that is what you're telling me, the conditional use permit that that building had under Iron Springs continues.
Runs with the bit ones.
That runs, so that runs with the, yes.
Yes.
Runs with, with the location.
Uh huh.
So we're just doing a formula business conditional use to permit, so should we approve that this building would have the conditional use permit that runs with the address? And then the owners would have a formula business conditional use permit, is that correct?
Well, not exactly, it's a little complicated, but use permits run with the land, period.
Can I interject before you continue?
Yes, of course.
I just realized that I'm in the red zone on this one. Thank you for mentioning the music. Um, I need to recuse myself. I don't know what that means for the vote we just had, Linda and Jenny.
Cause you're too close.
Uh, I'm gonna step out of here, uh, for the rest of this hearing.
Ah, okay, you, you live too close, okay, thank you, Mimi, sorry about that.
Whoa.
Okay, well, now we know this won't be a tie.
So can you go back, Janet, and address the?
What I was saying was that conditional use permits run with the land. And, and that's a phrase that's used to describe them, that's what it said, run with the land. It means that it stays with the business, it can be sold, and as it was in this case, then when they bought that business, they bought it with the conditional use permit in place. It has a value, so I'm sure that factored into the price of the, the purchase price. Um, and so you can still continue to operate what that conditional use permit allowed you to operate there. You have to stay with all the conditions, you have to meet all the requirements, you have to meet everything. So if this business gets a formula business use permit, it means, uh, essentially that, uh, this business can then operate there. Let's say we have, you know, another business that comes in, and, um, they say, okay, well, we're going to, we're, uh, Starbucks, and we're going to purchase this formula business use permit. But the problem with that is, they can't keep to the same conditions. And so it's, while it seems kinda complicated, they would have to come in for a review of whether or not they can stay with the same, they can keep with the same conditions and meet the same requirements that that previous formula business use permit required or found, the same findings. And I think we would know that something like Starbucks wouldn't probably be able to meet those same conditions. And so that would be a question for the commission, does it or does it not? Um, but we don't have to cross that bridge until we get, but it's not something that is just going to automatically, because it is a different type of use permit, it's a, a review of the conditions and the requirements would have to be done for another business that perhaps is also a formula business.
But the business that was previous to this new one was not a formula business. So the only thing Iron Springs had was a conditional use.
Just a regular condition, permit to operate a restaurant there.
Right, so this one's coming in, this would be a new formula.
Yes.
Use, okay, got it, thank you.
Multiple use permits layered on top of each other, that's okay, you can have more than one.
Thank you.
Any other comments before we go to see if there are any comments from the public? Any hands up, Tamela? I see a hand, is that Cindy still?
Yes, sorry, Cindy's.
Okay, I, I, I don't see any other hands, unless Tamela tells me there are, we will go to the public hearing. Tamela, can you rec, uh, remind the public how they can join in on this discussion?
Yes, you can use the raise hand button in the bottom center of your screen. It seems you can also call in if you're still awake and listening to us.
And we'll give people a minute to raise their hand or make that call. Uh, if we don't get any public comment, then I would close, uh, close the public hearing. And Janet, would you recommend that we?
There, Fregoso, uh, Colin McDonald has just raised his hand.
Okay, wonderful. Please, uh, please speak up, are you unmuted?
I am.
Good.
Uh, so I, I have to admit.
Uh, so I, I have to admit that you kind of hurt my feelings by saying we're a formula business. Um, but I do understand the, the town's interest in defending precedent there. Um, I just want to uh reiterate the, our interest in not um being a cookie cutter business, but our interest in contributing to the, the town creatively, uh economically, uh and you know, uh communally. We, we want to be a cool place that makes Fairfax a better place to live and not be somewhere that's just, you know, trying to stamp something that doesn't belong there. Uh, and I felt that that was important to say at this point.
Thank you very much for saying that. And in no way did me, did we mean to offend you or belittle in any way the wonderful offer that you bring to us and the richness that you will add to this community. Uh, you know, this is one of those legalese technical things. And I think you will find that we will be able to be very complimentary and supportive of this business uh in a way that you won't feel uh a- as badly as you do just now, I'm, I'm hoping. Uh, I do appreciate your comment and that's part of the reason we all struggled with this decision. Because we see the value of what you offer and what you bring. And we truly understand the innovations and the excitement that you bring with you. And we feel that as well. And uh I believe you'll find that we want to have you in the community. We just really need to be able to dot the i's and cross the t's so that these things don't come back and bite anybody in the butt, to use a favorite old expression. Uh, but thank you for making that comment. And I just want to assure you that it did not fall on deaf ears. And uh, uh, the reason we're doing this is not because we don't believe you. Uh, and, and, and uh, look forward to bringing you into the community. We just need to uh do it in the proper, in the proper manner. But thank you for, for speaking up again. I, I appreciate that. Um, any other uh public comments that we can see?
I see no other hands, Chair Ferguson.
Okay. Uh, okay then. I, I will close the public hearing and bring it back to the commission for uh, well, maybe I'll start with a question for legal counsel. Uh, did you want us to, uh, again, we have a nor- a, a, a number of items, findings we must make. Would you like us to make these one at a time? Or if possible, would you like us to say, yes, uh, we approve the business based on all of these findings, A through F? Uh, what, what would your preference be in terms of taking action on this?
Well, I think it might, I mean, it's up to you. You can do whatever you like, but it might be more efficient to go to each commissioner and have them run through um the findings to see if they're able or not to make them.
Okay. And would you say that we have held the discussions uh in the sections one, two, and three, and four, following the findings? Or should we also comment on each of these?
You know, it's, it's really up to how you want to do it. There isn't any one right way of doing it.
Okay, all right. Uh, is there a commissioner who would like to begin? Uh, as legal counsel suggests, take all the findings and comment on whether you uh can make these findings. And if you have any comments uh regarding items one through four, uh if you agree or, or disagree with them, uh, please raise your hands and Tamela will call you in order. Uh, was that, was that direction clear to everyone?
I believe it was. And Commissioner Green is first up with this hand.
Perfect.
Okay, thank you. Um, I would like to run through A through F. Um, and I think I could do it fairly quickly here. Uh, and hopefully the applicant won't feel too bad after this. Um, the proposed formula business or restaurant will promote diversity and variety. Yes, it will. Okay. Um, the proposed formula business or restaurant with its design and improvements will be consistent with our village-like character. And uh Mr. McDonald testified that uh he wants to make this a, a unique place and et cetera. So I think that's, that's yes. C, the proposed formula business or restaurant will provide services or products which complement existing businesses in the zoning district. Well, we know from years of the brew pub being here that it does that. So yes. D, if located within the town planning area, center planning area, the proposed formula business will be consistent or restaurant will be consistent with the pedestrian orientation of the town center planning area. I think that's yes. Um, the proposed formula business or restaurant will help residents avoid the need to drive out of town for their brewing needs. Yes, that's, that's yes. The proposed formula business or restaurant will be consistent with all applicable general plan, goals, objectives, policies, and programs. And I think that's a yes as well. Um, and I'm looking forward to your beers. End of my comments. Thank you.
Did, did you not have comments on items one, two, four? Do you, I assume you generally agree with those as well?
Yes, I do. I, I, and, and it's, they're true uh statements and uh um, that's why, you know, there wasn't a problem.
Thank you, Commissioner Green. And for commissioners moving forward, please don't feel you have to read each section unless there's something in particular you want to highlight uh or some special comment you'd like to make. So who's next on our, on our uh lineup?
Commissioner Kelly. Commissioner Kelly.
Okay.
Thank you. Um, I'll be brief. I, I can find uh A through F. I, I, I think that all of those are in fact easily um found. And the items one through four are yes also. Um, Mr. McDonald, I think that uh, you've hit all the points. I think, I think your business is a business that would be positive for Fairfax. And um, we're uh, probably all excited to have you in town. Thank you.
Thank you for uh, uh, your elaborations on the findings. Uh, Commissioner Kelly, and who's next?
Commissioner Swift.
I can make um all the findings from A through F.
Okay, and you also agree with the comments one through four?
Sure.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Jansen.
I can also make all the findings, A through F, and I concur with one, two, three.
Wonderful. Thank you. Does uh, that leave Commissioner Newman and myself? Oh, no. Commissioner uh Newman had to recuse herself, right? So that leaves me. Okay, I also uh wholeheartedly agree with all of these findings, A through F, and with uh the comments, uh numbers one through four. And I'm very excited uh to be able to uh continue this type of business. I, I think uh Restaurant Brewery will very much enrich uh our community and uh the fact that you are a formula business uh and, and have all these magnificent qualities for which we are approving you, I think uh hopefully makes you feel a lot better about how this meeting has gone, Mr. McDonald. And we look forward to welcoming you and to uh uh trying your brews one day soon. So that's a yes. Uh, we need a motion. Uh, legal counsel, do you need a motion or is that all you need?
We have a res- Linda, you're on mute. Um, we have a resolution. And we need probably, what, three minutes to fill it out?
Okay, why don't we take a three-minute break?
Is that enough time?
And let's make it five minutes.
Can you hear me? I am not absolutely sure, but I'm, I'm a little confused. Maybe Tamela can help me. How do I share the screen with you, Janet, so we can complete it? Or should I just call you on the phone?
Just call me on the phone. Okay. Give us five minutes and we'll, we'll fit it, we'll fix it and we'll share screen and we'll get back.
Okey dokey.
Thank you.
Recording stopped.
Okay, we're back.
Recording in progress.
I believe someone may have something on this causing a little bit of feedback.
Oh, the phone. Well, there we go. It's the phone doing it. Hang up the phone. There we go.
Okay, so I'm going to screen share.
Oh my God. I can, I, uh, the document is on my phone in about one font.
Well, what do you think, Jen? And I can read it real fast if that, okay. Here I go. So resolution number twenty, twenty-two dash, oops. Oh, that should be, that's wrong. Okay. So resolution twenty-two-two-zero-one, a resolution of the Fairfax Planning Commission approving a formula business use permit for a restaurant and micro brewery to be operated by Hen House Brewing Company at seven sixty-five A Center Boulevard Fair and some Commercial Center. Whereas the town of Fairfax received an application to remodel the existing restaurant and micro brewery at seven sixty-five A Center Boulevard by Hen House Brewing on January third, twenty-twenty-two. And whereas the Planning Commission held a duly noticed public hearing on January twentieth, twenty-twenty-two, at which time what?
Hearing is misspelled.
Oh, thank you. And whereas is misspelled too, I see. Oh, yes, herring. At which time all interested parties were given a full opportunity to be heard and to present evidence. And whereas, based on the interior remodel floor plan and supplemental information provided by the applicant as well as testimony at the public hearing, the Planning Commission has determined that the applicant has met the burden of proof required to support the findings necessary for the proposed formula business use permit as described below. And the commission, and whereas the commission has determined that the original conditional use permit granted for a restaurant and micro brewery runs with the land and its prior approval is not in question. And the original use permit findings for approval do not need to be revisited. And whereas the commission has determined the proposed project, oops, there's a, right there. I gotta take that out. Does meet, missed one. Okay. And whereas the commission has determined the proposed proj- project does meet all of the required findings to enable them to approve, I missed another one. Approve the formula, approve the formula business use permit. And whereas, in accordance with section seventeen point zero four point two-two-zero of the Fairfax Municipal Code, the commission hereby makes the following findings to support approval of the application for a formula business use permit. The proposal complies with the Fairfax General Pan- Plan Policies, Policies as follows. Land use element goal, land use dash seven, preserve human-centered scale and sense of community. Policy ta- policy ta- I can't even talk. Okay. Policy TC dash one point, one point one. New and or renewed development in the town center planning area shall preserve and enhance the village-like nature and pedestrian scale of the downtown area. And whereas, in accordance with section seventeen zero four, two-two-zero, A through F, the required findings for approval for approval of a conditional use of formula business and restaurant in zones allowing commercial uses, the commission finds as follows. The proposed formula business or restaurant will promote diversity and variety to assure a balanced mix of commercial uses available to serve both, both resident and visitor populations. The proposed business is the only brew pub or restaurant in town. B, the proposed formula business or restaurant, together with its design and improvements, will be consistent with the unique and historic village-like character of the town and preserve the unique visual appearance, appearance and shopping and dining experience of the town for its residents and visitors. The exterior of the business is not changing architecturally and signage will be distinctive from their other locations. C, the proposed formula dis- proposed formula or business or restaurant will provide services or products which complement existing businesses in the zoning district in which it is proposed to operate, considering the existence of and proximity to the same or similar businesses within that zone and will not have significant adverse financial impact to same or similar businesses within that zone. I'll say the business is replacing is replacing a similar business that was previously at the same location and providing similar services successfully. Should we say successfully? Successfully to those previously provided. And D, if located within the town center planning area, the proposed formula business or restaurant will be consistent with the pedestrian orientation of the town center planning area. Uh, the applicant, change that. The applicant plans has to continue operating the outdoor seating for the restaurant, which draws pedestrians to the be- to the business. E, the proposed formula business or restaurant will help residents avoid the need to drive out of town for their shopping needs. It is the only brewery restaurant in town. And F, the proposed formula business or restaurant will be consistent with all applicable general plan, goals, objectives, policies, and programs. Finding is the proposed business is consistent with all applicable general plan, goals, objectives, policies, and programs. Whereas the commission has reviewed the project based on the information provided in the applicant supplemental information containing the business floor plan, description of proposed use, photographs of the interior and building exteriors of their hen house breweries in Petaluma and Santa Rosa with brief descriptions of the operations and unique character of each location. Colin McDonald's, McDonald's email of ten nineteen twenty-one, providing supporting information for his position. Oh, that's wrong. I was just gonna say, and Colin McDonald's email, um, providing supporting information about the business. And whereas pursuant to sequel guideline sections, section, the project is exempt per California Code of Regulations, chapter three, article nineteen, categorical exemption number fifteen three oh one A. Now therefore be it resolved that the Planning Commission of the town of Fairfax hereby finds and determines as follows. The Planning Commission hereby approves the formula business conditional use permit on the basis of the above findings. Foregoing resolution was adopted at a regular meeting of the Planning Commission in said town on the twentieth day of January twenty-twenty-two by following vote.
Linda?
Mm-hmm. Yeah.
Um, that first, that whereas, the last line where you, it says, providing supporting information for about the business, should you delete the for, the last line on that one?
Yes, thank you.
And then the resolution number, can you repeat what that is?
Resolution number should be twenty, twenty, twenty-two-two dash zero one. I'm sorry, zero two. It should be zero two because um seventy-nine was zero one. So this should be.
Got it.
Two. Thank you. I'll change that.
All the highlighting and the comments will be removed.
Yep.
That uh, that sounds, that sounds good.
Looks like Commissioner Jansen has a question.
Okay. Robert, are you muted? There you go.
Uh, no, I'm not. I hope not. No. Um, in the comment under uh finding B, I would strike the uh, I would strike the and sign. It will be distinct if that's not. I would strike the and sign, it will be distinct if that's not relevant.
Okay. Does everyone agree?
Well, uh, uh, I don't think we want just their standard hen house. I think since we've determined it is a formula business, they can have hen house somewhere, but uh, did people have an objection to the chicken and the bike and the West County? I mean, uh, I don't want to preclude their creativity and say, just use your same old hen house sign.
I just kind of think, since that seemed to be the, one of the points that was giving, that was causing concern for the commission, if you have that language in there, it'll be clear that you don't want them to just have a, one of the similar, the same signs as the other locations.
Oh, okay. If that's the case, that's
But I don't know.
Misunderstood.
I'm just throwing that out there. I don't know. If the commission wants it out, I'll just take it out, but.
Well, it's just my opinion. I don't know what the other commissioners think.
I mean, I think if we've identified them as a formula business, I mean, to me, they, they will come in wi- with a sign. I don't think, I would take it out. I don't think we need to, to be concerned about
But you under-
Having a distinctive
But you understand that if they come in with a sign that says hen house brewery, I don't have any basis to deny it.
But this is at the point.
But, but if we've, if
Yeah, if you're okay with it, I'll
The commission has identified them as a formula business.
Oh, yeah, it doesn't matter. Okay, great. Taking it out.
That means they can be creative with their sign, right?
Or not. Or not. They can be creative or they don't have to be. Yeah, okay. Any other comments?
Rather they be creative.
Well, he said he's going to be, but.
Well, if he said he's going to be, then let's, let's, uh, let him be and not tell him to go back to just be the hen house.
Just as long as, I just want to make sure you understand, if I get a sign application with, for a sign matching the ones in Santa Rosa, I will have no legal, I won't have any code to deny it. There'll be nothing to, um,
I, I guess
Isn't that the point?
Standing.
We approve them. We are conditionally approving them as a formula business. So that's the point that they're allowed to do that. Otherwise, we wouldn't be here.
Right.
Does that mean they cannot be creative with their signs?
No, no, they can be creative, but they also can just match their hen ha- the other hen house signs because they're a formula business. So I just want to make sure everybody understands that.
Okay.
Yeah. Okay. Anything else?
Well, this is, this is a question. Uh, can we put conditions here that are more specific um, than the ones, you know, the, the, than just the findings that we've made? Can we do that? It's just a basic question.
You can, yes.
It, it, in, in terms of the sign, for instance, we can or did you have something else in mind, Commissioner?
I, I had, I had, um, mentioned this in the earlier session. I don't want to blend them or anything, but, um, that the signage could, could, uh, emphasize Fairfax and West County, uh, pub and say featuring just kind of, I'm just suggesting adding the word featuring, maybe the applicant's hearing may featuring, uh, you know, hen house beers.
So I added, did you see me add this line? The formula business use permit is approved subject to the following conditions. If you guys want to add some conditions, we can add them in there.
I would, I like the resolution as it is. I don't want to add, um, conditions about the signage. They had already provided, some things they were considering that would be unique. So I would leave it up to the applicant.
Yes, Cindy, but Linda, weren't you saying that the way it's written, you could not approve the creative thing they submitted to us?
No, I can, I can approve the creative thing. What I'm saying is if they walked in with a hen house brewery sign that matched the others, that met the size requirements of the town sign ordinance.
Without the creative stuff.
I would have nothing, I don't have any legal basis to deny it and say you have to be creative.
But all their other signage is different.
Do that, or do we want to just le- leave them alone?
I, I, I don't want it to just be the big hen house square sign. I'd like him to do what he said he wanted to do, which was to be creative with it and give it a local flavor.
So you either trust him to do that or you include language in your resolution?
And I think we should include language.
What you're looking for.
That something similar to what they proposed, something along those lines to be approved, uh, ministerially. How about that?
Well, I think
Too restrictive?
Phil, didn't you, someone was coming up with language and just kind of specified
That we could, we could, here's, here's a condition then, just, uh, hopefully a mild one. Mr. McDonald, uh, don't take this too heavily, but, um, just a condition that says that, uh, you know, the, the, the signage will include the name, uh, West County Pub, um, featuring, um, hen house brews, rather than it being, you know, hen house pub ever, something like that.
Is the, is the owner still with us?
He is and his hand is raised.
Okay, good. Let's hear what he has to say.
Fair enough.
Colin, go ahead.
We'd love to have totally unique signage for this location, and I'm more than happy to have it in the resolution, but the signage for this location needs to be totally unique.
Can, oh, uh, legal counsel, can we live with that? And with a ministerial approval by, uh, planning?
Whoops. Okay, that's up to you. Um, if you, if you want to place a condition in here, um, regarding the signage, that's fine. You can do that.
Well, then how about?
And staff say that I really like the chicken riding the bike on the mountain.
I like the chicken too.
I really like the chicken riding the bike on the mountain.
I'm also very fond of the, 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 the chicken riding the bikes. I hope that that works for everybody because we'd really like to run with that one.
Well, that works really well with Fairfax, you know, of course, riding a bike. Um, no, my suggestion was just going to be something like, um, the applicant will endeavor to prevent its signage in Fairfax from appearing to be too similar to the signage of its other locations.
That's, that's strange language. Uh, I'd rather, I'd rather say, uh, the signage they proposed in their application uh, is fine. I'd rather say that.
You mean
At least there's some things, we got the chicken, we got the bike.
Chicken riding the bike over the mountain.
West County.
Specify that.
I'll mount my suggestion, just strike it.
Okay. What do you guys want to do?
I, I want to leave it out. I agree with, uh, Commissioner Jansen, let the applicant submit, the signs that they want. They'd already put in that they were looking at unique signage for this location. So I would leave it up to the applicant and not have any, um, language in the resolution addressing the signs.
And Linda can approve it, whatever it is?
Yeah, yeah, I can approve it. It's, I can approve it if it meets the size and the regulations. And I think this area of, of, um, of the Fair and some Center might have like a, um, set signage regulations for it.
Right, right.
So if they propose something that complies with the code or with the previously approved sign program, I can approve it. If they do something that doesn't comply with the sign ordinance, it needs to come to you.
Okay.
All right, after that was
Oh, this is out, correct? I'm gonna delete it.
Yeah, okay, take that out. That's, we're getting too complicated already. So let's, I agree.
All right. It's out.
Good.
Where are we?
So we can have a vote.
Are we now voting on this resolution? Is that what we're doing or?
No, you should, someone should make a motion to adopt the resolution as proposed.
Okay, can someone do that? Are we done with the reso, uh?
Sure, I'll make, I'll make a, um,
Thank you.
I'll make a motion to adopt. I can't read the top of the resolution.
Oh, sorry, let me, let me get
Two dash oh two.
Here we go.
Okay, twenty twenty, uh, make a motion now to adopt Resolution Number Twenty Twenty-two dash oh two for approving a formula business use permit for the restaurant and microbrewery to be operated by Hen House Brewing Company. And, um, looking for a second.
For a second.
I'll second.
Roll call, please.
Okay, Green?
Hi.
Jansen?
Hi.
Kelly?
Hi.
Newton? Oh, she's not there, sorry. Swift? Swift? Chair Fagoso.
Aye. The motion carries. Uh, thank you very much, Mr. McDonald, for your patience. There is, as you probably know, a ten-day appeal period, but one would have to pay six hundred and fifty dollars to appeal it to the council. And, uh, uh, sorry to put you through our craziness, but, uh, we're delighted to have you in town. Look forward to dropping by. And that takes us to, uh, we've continued Senate Bill Nine ordinance. It takes us to review of the minutes. I'm, uh, can I assume we don't have a planning director's report? Uh, we may have commissioner comments. Let's go over those minutes.
Okay, I've got some comments. Corrections? Yes.
Chidoak.
Page four, top line, change G R E E to G R E E N.
Oh, yes. Okay.
And then also, um,
Leave us there.
Under the planning director's report on Commissioner Swift's comments, can you change that Commissioner Swift mentioned that the town council's approval of modification to the general plan resulted in an amendment?
Uh, can I?
I can, I, can I send it to you after I read it?
You can send it to me, but I just wanted, I, I'm having trouble texting the town attorney to let her know that, yes, she can leave the meeting.
Oh, go ahead.
Yeah.
Thank you so much. I appreciate it.
She hears?
Night, everyone. She can hear us. Good night, Janet. Thanks for
Good night, Janet. Thank you very much.
See you next month.
See you next month, yes.
Okay, the twenty-fourth, remember.
Yes. Okay. So Cindy, I'm sorry, could you go back to your last change? Or do you want to just?
Commissioner Swift mentioned that the town council's approval of modification to the general plan resulted in amendment to the general plan. As such, printed copies needed to be made and one of those copies provided the Fairfax Library for its government section. Those are the only corrections I had.
Tony is also takes excellent meeting minutes. Please give her our regards, Linda, when you see her.
Okay, I will. I do see her periodically.
About once a few years I run into her.
And I just wanted to tell you guys that Colin's last name is McDonnell. D O N N E L L. Not McDonald. Yeah, so I'm gonna fix that on the first page too. I, I had it wrong on my staff report. I don't know why I did it wrong because I know how he spells his last name, so. And did Chair Newton get your comments? And I'm sorry, I don't remember.
Not Chair, former Chair.
Former Chair, so sorry. As we get closer to midnight, I do get more, uh,
No, it's okay. Uh, I do have a couple of quick comments.
On the minutes?
Yeah. The name of the file is still referencing the Larkspur Planning Commission. On page two, there's a reference to, in the paragraph that talks about, uh, Director Berto and Mr. Flower answered questions. Uh, on the second line, it should say, uh, contacted, not contracted.
Got it.
And there's a missing R, uh, if they are able to object. And also, I think on that same page, Liesel is L I S E L.
Yep, got it.
Okay.
Anything else?
If, if there are no other comments, do we also move, uh, do we have a motion to, uh, adopt the minutes?
I'll move to adopt the minutes with those corrections.
I'll second.
Okay, I'll call old Green.
I wasn't at that meeting.
Oh, you weren't? Okay. No green. All right. Jansen?
Hi.
Kelly?
Hi.
Newton?
Hi.
Swift?
Hi.
Chair Fagoso?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, okay. Uh, we don't have a planning director's report unless, uh, you have anything for us, Linda?
Nope. I was gonna, I was gonna tell you about your meeting being moved, but we already covered that.
Okay, we covered that. Any commissioner comments or requests?
I have Swift has her hand up?
So, um, Planning Director Berto sent out an email to everyone concerning the upcoming League of California's Planning Commission, Commissioner Academy. Um, and I think last month he said that if anyone was interested, he could do, um, the registration for y'all, but I think, um, you can also do your own registration and get reimbursed from the town if you want to do something along those lines. I think, um, it's worthwhile to attend one of these. You can also get, you get good information. You also get your ethics training done at that point too. So just something to look at, but, um, since he is not here tonight, if it was something you could or were interested in attending, you can do your own registration and then go to the town for reimbursement, I believe. Correct, Linda?
Correct.
That's the way I've done it in the past.
Right, that, that's correct. And this year, it's in the, it's in the Bay Area, isn't it?
San Ramon?
Oh, it's not too far off.
That's all I have.
Okay, one thing, uh, I have for comments and requests. I know council will be talking about our outdoor eateries. And, uh, there's, there's, uh, there's a lot to talk about. There, there's a lot of pros and cons and uh, I'm just wondering, Linda, if you know, if we'll have a chance to review that before council makes their decisions without, uh, running it past us in any way. It doesn't have to be a formal item. It could be under commissioner comments and discussion sometime. We could chat about what, what council's thinking, what are the issues, what, you know, when is it coming forward so that we're not just blindsided when we're out there in the community and we learn that council decided one thing or another.
I will pass your request along to the acting town manager because I don't really have the, I don't, I don't even know how they're gonna do it. You know, I don't know if they're gonna try to, you know, amend their code and do it by ordinance, or if they're gonna do it by resolution. I don't even know how it's going to happen. I just know that they will be addressing it when it suns You know, amend their code and do it by ordinance, or if they're gonna do it by resolution, I don't even know how it's going to happen, I just know that they will be addressing it when it sunsets, right, which I think.
Right.
Yeah, which is coming up, I thought.
I think it's May.
Yeah, I want to say May too.
Is it, it's coming up fast.
Well.
So it could be extended a bit, right?
I have it right, I have it right here, in front of my face, hang on. He wanted. May third, oh no, that's, sorry, that's the old one, hang on.
I think we reviewed it much later.
Uh, they didn't. I didn't, I didn't think they gave it to you guys. They didn't, it was.
We didn't see anything, we just, well.
Because it wasn't, it wasn't an ordinance change, it was a um. It was an emergency pandemic measure that they took, right, to try to keep the businesses afloat.
Yeah, it didn't come to the planning commission.
I mean, because the code says when you build structures in the public right of way, they're supposed to get an encroachment permit from the planning commission, this was, this totally bypassed you. And I don't know whether they will change the code, if they decide to, you know, keep them permanently, or if they will. Um, have you guys approve them? Yeah, so the permits are, 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 I can't talk, are expect, will expire on May eighth of twenty twenty-two. So we'll have to make some kind of a decision before then. As to what they're gonna do. I, I mean, are you guys all, are you guys signed up with the clerk to get copies of? The council, you know, you can sign up, yeah, you can sign up to get the council agendas, and then you'll see if they're discussing it.
Yeah.
You can speak as a citizen, um, but I'm, I don't know that they're, they may decide to do an ordinance and send it to you. I, I just have no idea what they're gonna do, they may decide not to extend them, and it'll just be. Over.
Yes, unfortunately, my life does not revolve around tracking.
Yeah.
Council. Council agendas, but I get you. Okay, so um, if there are no other comments. Do we have a motion to adjourn? Oh, one, I do have, I'm sorry, one question, Linda, what's coming up next month?
So you have, you're gonna have a house of seventy-five pine. You might have another formula business application, but I'm not sure yet, they haven't quite completed their application. Um, and that's. That's for USPS um, business to take over where Avatar used to be, basically doing the same thing, where you could copy things and they'll mail things for you and. Yeah, but. He's still.
And I'll be even more recused from that one.
Yes, you will remember the time, you'll remember the time that you have to recuse yourself.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, yeah, and, and Linda, whatever happened with the cannabis?
The cannabis? Oh, thank you for reminding me, because I keep telling you that. They were supposed to have their own special meeting on January twenty-sixth, but. Both the clerk and I were trying to get our packets done for our meetings this week, and so neither of us remembered that we had to get a notice out for that meeting, so it did not happen. So they've been moved to the February second council meeting, and that's where the appeal of their. Formula business denial will be heard, and the council will be acting on the sign permit. The design review permit and the business permit.
Oh, okay, so it goes to council, their appeal goes to council then?
And those other discretionary permits that you just made a recommendation on, and you scored the business permit, right?
Right, right, that's correct. Okay, interesting.
Thanks for saying that, because I have to tell the property owner too, I, I told the applicants, but I forgot to tell.
Yeah, that will be very interesting to see uh. Is the uh, uh, the Monobol still uh, operating there, or are they closed down?
Uh, I saw people going in and out this week. So, I believe they're operating.
Okay, and uh. I've seen, I've seen more music out on the outdoor eateries. Lately, and also at uh, well, there's the piano, but at that outdoor. Uh, lounge area at uh, at Perry's, there's been outdoor music there as well.
Yeah, so you know, the outdoor music is kind of interesting, because there are a lot of musicians in Fairfax, and they will just sit down and start playing. Are they actually musicians hired by the business to play? I don't know, and I'm not here all the time, so.
Yeah.
You know, it's. How do you stop it if it's just someone that's sitting there eating and playing with their friends? We ran.
Perry's, Perry's has.
Perry's has, has bands with, with.
Perry's, Perry's has a use for outdoor music, yeah, I thought you meant in the outdoor eating in front of.
In the eateries, yes, I have seen, I have seen people sitting there playing.
And Chair Newton has her hand raised, or, I'm sorry, Commissioner Newton, I will get it right.
I was gonna, I was gonna move to adjourn if, if we didn't have anything else.
Move to adjourn, Mimi.
Second.
I'll call the roll, Green?
Aye.
Jansen?
Aye.
Kelly?
Aye.
Newton?
Aye.
Swift?
Aye.
Fregoso?
Aye.
Okay.
You all.
Nice seeing you all.
We're done, good night, everybody, good to see you all.